Good morning, everybody. It's nine o'clock. We will call to order the meeting of the Douglas County Board of Commissioners. For the record, a copy of the open meetings law is on the north wall of the legislative chambers. And just for purpose of noting, there is a, the notice used to be on here, but there is an automatic external defibrillators available in the back hall of the legislative chambers if that is to be needed for any purpose. I'd like everybody to rise for the pledge of allegiance, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We are now called to order the meeting of the Douglas County Board of Equalization. Roll call.
Mr. Boyle, Gusha Kavanaugh, Gusha Duda, Mr. Kraft, Mr. Morgan, Mr. Rogers.
Here. Item A, approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held Tuesday, June 6, 2017. Item B, call for and set a meeting of Tuesday, June 20, 2017 as a date for hearing to certify the assessment and corrections. Is there was the will of the board?
Second.
There's motion, second. Seen no discussion, please vote.
Motion passes.
Item C, citizens' comments. This is an opportunity for members of the audience who want to be heard on an issue that is not currently on the Board of Equalization's agenda for today. Are there any citizens' comments at this time? Seen none. We'll move on to resolutions. Item D is denial of 2017 permissive exemption applications. And item E, permission, I mean denial of personal property permissive exemptions. Is anybody wants to speak on this item? Hearing none. Okay, please come. Please state your name.
Jordan Adams, Fraser Stryker Law Firm in Omaha, 500 Energy Plaza, 409 South Seventeenth Street. I assume that the goodwill tax exemption request for 2017 is on the agenda and that's one of the items. And that's what I'd like to talk about. We were here back in May to talk about goodwill's tax exemption request for 2017. It was laid over a couple of times due to conflicts that we had in our schedules and that brings us here today. As the board knows, the 2016, just as a refresher, what I talked about a little bit last time is that the 2016 goodwill asked for a tax exemption request and that was granted by the Board of Equalization here in a six-one vote. I just want to give you a status of what's going on in the Turk appeal right now and maybe as your counsel has told you, but there is a, there was a hearing, we had a discovery motion hearing on May 19, 2017, in that tax appeal hearing. The assessor has served us over 200 interrogatories, numerous requests for production of documents. There's been an objection on that and so we're having, there's briefing that's going on. And I guess the point is, is that the case for the 2016 exemption is being fully litigated right now in the, up with Turk. And this request here for 2017 tax exemption, however the board decides today on this ruling, I assume there's going to be a vote today. But this is going to get appealed, one way or the other. If we're denied tax exemption, we're going to appeal. If they grant to, if the board grants a tax exemption, there's going to be appeal. And we're going to be back here again in 2018 as pursuant to the rule. Mr. Goodwill, if he wants to deny tax exemption for us, he's going to have to protest it again next year in 2018. So the reality is, is that if this board decides today to deny tax exemption, there's going to be conflicting rulings up at the Turk level. And so what we've asked for is to maintain the status quo. And what I can tell you is that I think it's been reported that if the, if the board denies tax exemption, I think that's going to be in the neighborhood of $300,000 to $400,000 that's going to come off of goodwill's books, a tax that they've never paid before. And that goodwill will have to seriously look at its operations and whether or not we'll have to make certain hard financial decisions, whether or not have to close stores, whether or not jobs will have to be cut. And so there are real financial implications for this. So the other thing that I wanted to point out is that goodwill, currently only 14% of its revenue goes to pay overhead. The rest of it is eighty, the rest of it goes to its charitable missions and programs. So if the board denies tax exemption, that $300,000, $400,000 is going to be cut from their charitable programs that they have. And Polly Bishop, who's standing next to me here, the interim CEO at goodwill, will talk a little bit more about that. After the hearing, we contacted the board's legal counsel and we asked, what are the questions that the board would like to know? You know, what are the things that the board, how can we help them make this decision? What more information they want? And what was communicated to us was that the board wanted to know what changes have been made from 2016 to 2017. And let me just highlight a few. As you all know, there's been a change in leadership, there's been a change in management. The people that were making the decisions regarding the information that was in the report in the World Herald in 2014, 2015, are no longer with goodwill. Now, sitting next to me or standing next to me is Polly Bishop. And she was not in charge at the times those decisions were made. The other thing I wanted to talk about is that only, currently only three people at goodwill make $100,000 or more. Polly Bishop, the interim CEO, is making $167,000. The VP of Missions Advancement, he makes $100,000 flat. The Retail Operations VP, he makes $121,000. Now, as you all know, in 2015 goodwill had paid some of its officers, or its officers, there's 14 people that were paid more than $100,000. Now there's three people that are paid. And so about a million dollars has been cut roughly from officer compensation, all right? Now, the, I just want to touch on the NAM study because the 2015 Nebraska Associate of the Midlands study has been raised. And there was reporting in the paper is, well, how does goodwill Omaha compare to the goodwills in Iowa City and the goodwills in Kansas City? I just, just really quickly here, I'll just note that the NAM study only looked at organizations with budgets of $10 million. Goodwill has a budget that is three times that much. And the mean salary in the NAM study for 2015 for CEO was $169,000. Ms. Bishop here is making less than that. The mean salary for the CFO, the mean salary, that's not even the most, the mean salary for the CFO is $96,000. The COO, $112,000. And again, goodwill is paying the VP of their missions $100,000 and the VP of its retail operations $121,000. So I would just point out, and I'll turn it over to Polly here. I would just point out that the, that the test is whether or not a financial gain is being conferred to the officers, directors and so forth. That clearly is not happening in this case. There's five retail stores that are issued in this case. None of the profits that we're making from those stores are being paid to anybody at goodwill. So with that, I just turn it over to Polly. Ms. Bishop, sorry.
Good morning. I'm Polly Bishop, 4805 North Seventy Second Street. I just want to share a couple of points with you today. Actually, the mission of goodwill is to change lives, strengthen communities through education, training and work. And with that being said, in 2016, we had 23,413 basic job readiness services that were provided to individuals in our community here in Omaha. And what that means is we help people with certain things like resume building, job interviewing and job searches. Also in 2016, we had 1,916 people that were enrolled in our programs at goodwill. And also, on a monthly basis, we have about an average of 148 volunteers helping us out in our stores. And it's actually at each one of our stores, whether it's owned or leased. And 25% of our workforce have self-reported as having a disability. And then the last point that I really want to share today, in 2016, goodwill diverted 7 million pounds of materials from landfills. So what could have gone into the landfill didn't. I think 7 million pounds is pretty impressive. So those are the points that I have to share. And Jordan spoke of, you know, the impact on the organization if we were to have to pay property tax. We will have to look at our locations and could potentially have to close stores. That would mean people would be losing jobs, people would be losing their health insurance. There would be an increase in unemployment benefits for those folks. We would have to reduce the services that we offer to the community in Omaha. And that, that's quite an impact on our organization. So that's all I have to share.
And that's, that's a tax that will have to be paid immediately by goodwill. And so these are immediate financial consequences to the board. And this is something that we're not going to have, I can tell you that the hearing in front of Turk, we're probably not going to have a resolution, a hearing at least until 2018. And from there, I think that there will be appeal very likely to the Nebraska Supreme Court. And as you know, it takes time in the Supreme Court. We may not be looking at a decision until maybe 2019, 2020. So that's a long time for this to, to carry that balance if we're forced to pay the taxes.
Thanks, Em. I'm Pat Barrett. I'm also an attorney with Fraser Stryker, 409 South Seventeenth Street. I just wanted to make a few points and I was engaged by goodwill in late October of 2016 at the time at which the former CEO was separated. And that began my involvement. I've also been involved with goodwill with respect to an investigation by the Attorney General's office. And I wanted to make a few points today, and I'll keep them very brief, with respect to why I think the permissive exemption ought to be granted. Number one, it appears that the adverse publicity generated by the Omaha World Herald article is the basis for much of the resistance to granting the permission. As Jordan indicated, the test is different than that. The IRS requires that for charitable organizations of this type, that compensation cannot be excessive or unreasonable. The company engaged in 2015 and 2016 compensation experts to determine whether or not the compensation paid to Mr. McCree and its executives were excessive. It engaged the Hay Group in 2015, which conducted all types of comparability studies, both with profit and nonprofit organizations geographically located, to determine whether or not, what the particular pay range should be with respect to those positions. The company also, or the agency also engaged Silverstone, local group, to do a peer group comparator for the leadership positions and Mr. McCree's positions in 2016 prior to the October articles by the Omaha World Herald. It did this because it has a responsibility to make sure that the compensation it pays under IRS rules is not excessive or unreasonable. Those studies showed that while Mr. McCree's total compensation was above the market, it was not unreasonable or excessive. The vast majority of the leadership positions in those comparability studies showed that they were not paid an unreasonable amount and were not paid even above the market. And in most cases, those leadership positions were paid below the market. I make those points for a couple of reasons. Number one, none of us in this room is a compensation expert. We can all say, look, I look at this and I say the compensation is excessive. Mr. McCree's 2014 compensation is clearly excessive, you may say. But what you don't understand is with respect to 2014, which was the year that was focused by the Omaha World Herald, he was paid out a deferred compensation retirement program that IRS rules changed and dictated that those amounts which had been contributed over the years and had had market performance since 2008 had to be paid out at 2014. We had no choice in that matter. That is what contributed to the high, the high compensation that he, that he had incurred in 2014. With the rest of those years, the compensation, we may say it's excessive, but you can't look at that in a vacuum. You have to determine what are his obligations, what is his tenure, what are his duties and responsibilities, what does he do? And the experts have determined, compared to similar type positions throughout the Midwest, that they were not excessive. The second point I'd like to make is, not only have the experts looked at this and, but the Attorney General initiated an investigation, as it has the statutory authority to do, in November of 2016. We have participated in that investigation. We've provided to date over 150,000 pages of documents. We've had about 10 interviews and depositions. There's probably a dozen more to follow. We have engaged an entity called Quantum Governance out of Virginia, which is an organization which is dedicated to making charitable organizations better. And they are undergoing an entire review of the culture, its operations, its policies to determine whether or not goodwill's policies, procedures, culture can be improved and should be improved. They've taken a number of efforts. Jordan Adams indicated that of that World Herald study which indicated that 14, 13 or 14 people made over $100,000, there's only three today. The former CEO is gone. The company is making changes. And the people who are responsible for, for a number of these decisions are no longer with the organization. They're doing their best to try and comply with whatever obligations they have, both to the public and to their donor base, to do better. And to penalize them now by denying them the exemption at a time at which the Attorney General's still looking at the issue of whether or not goodwill is meeting its mission, seems to be premature. If you rule against the permissive exemption here and the Attorney General comes back in the fall and says, no, there was no problem here, that may undercut the county's case. So I think it's important, at least for this year, that you wait and see what it is the Attorney General finds. They're the experts. They're looking at this. They're statutorily empowered to look at this. They'll look at all the expert reviews regarding compensation, whether or not it's unreasonable and whether or not goodwill's meeting its mission. And it seems to me that the prudent course is to continue to grant the exemption and then make a different decision based on what the Attorney General finds. If the Attorney General finds, yes, there was a problem here, there was excessive compensation, they aren't meeting their charitable obligations, then you can reassess at that point. But it seems to be premature to be making a decision which essentially penalizes people that weren't responsible for these decisions before and denies them the exemption, which may cause a further hardship as, as further noted. So it seems to me that the best course of action is to continue the exemption, determine what it is the experts determine, the Attorney General's office, and they're here today watching, see what they say and then make a decision based on that. Otherwise, we're essentially making a decision based on some adverse publicity that the Omaha World Herald in their articles had written without any real rebuttal from the, from the agency. And for those reasons, I'd respectfully request that you grant the permissive exemption this year and look at it again next year.
Any other comment from the floor? Okay.
Mike Goodwill, Douglas County Assessor, Register of Deeds Office. I thought I addressed the goodwill remarks and then I'll sit down and we'll have, I mean, the other organizations can, I'll never remember it all otherwise. Thanks. A couple of observations. First, let's start with the money piece. The test, at least in, laid out by the Department of Revenue in its regulations for these things are that reasonable salaries are okay. The implication being that unreasonable ones, salaries and bonuses are not and constitute impermissible private inurnment. Mr. Adams related that there is ongoing discovery going on in the Turk case. That's certainly true. We've not had access to these salary studies that the goodwill seems to reference as, as the determination of experts about what the appropriate salaries and bonuses are. I would make the observation that if you're comparing, if your salary study mix is full of for-profits in addition to nonprofits, then perhaps if you're setting your salary on that basis, maybe you aren't comparing apples to apples. If you're deriving salaries from a significant mix of for-profit entities, that may be how you're thinking of yourselves. The notion that imposing taxes would cause the closing of stores, I'm having trouble with the math. And I realize part of why I went to law school is because I wasn't cut out to be an accountant. But nonetheless, it sounds like they have cut salaries to the tune of close to a, well, I want to say close to a million dollars, but if they had 14 people that were getting paid over $100,000 before and now they're down to, and now they're down to three, it doesn't seem to me that the wolf is at the door. Were they going to have to pay taxes? Obviously, those salaries were being generated from something, from the revenue of the stores and they had that money available to pay in terms of salaries and bonuses. The discussion of the vast number of jobs and job training, I think much of that occurs off-site and much of it is funded out of federal grants. What I can tell you is what the organization told us in response to questions that we asked about how the stores are used for job training. And so, for example, at the 142nd and Hillsdale store, we asked them, how many people does the store employ? 34 was the answer. Are the workers in the store part of an organized job, ongoing job training program? They checked the box that said yes. And then we asked, please describe the program and how many workers in the store are part of that program? Vodek program, six employees, six out of 34. For the store on 181st and R Plaza, we asked similar questions. And the responses were as follows. How many people does the store employ? 17. Are the workers in the store part of an organized, ongoing job training program? Answer, no. We got answers like that for the other bricks and mortar locations as well. So if they are conducting job training, if they are doing things in accordance with their stated mission, it does not appear that the predominant use of the stores is as a training feature. For the organization's 990, the most recent information that we have for 2015, it appears that the gross receipts from admissions merchandise sold or services performed was just north of $25 million. I don't know that the wolf is necessarily at the door, but this is not any kind of a mom and pop. I mean, this is, this is large scale and commercial. And I guess in response, I would just say, based on what we've been provided, we believe that the predominant use of the facility itself, not stuff that happens off-site, not the use of the proceeds, appears to be for something other than charitable purposes. It's a retail store. And as for the use of the money, it's the use of the property rather than the use of the money that controls. That said, the organization does have an obligation to not provide something other than reasonable compensation to employees, employees, and at least based on the information we have available, we think that's a pretty significant question. Thank you.
Do I need to state my name again?
Yes.
Okay. Polly Bishop, address also, 4805 North Seventy Second Street. I'm with goodwill. I just wanted to point out a couple of things that Mr. Goodwillly shared. As far as our salary studies, we actually did a couple of them in 2016. We actually engaged Silverstone prior to the articles coming out in the newspaper. The first study that we did was a 50-50 for-profit, nonprofit mix. And then we also did a 25-75, so 25 for-profit, 75% nonprofit. So we could get a good, you know, good mix of, you know, what does it look like out there in the market? And as Pat mentioned, you know, I'm not going to go back through all the details, but obviously we had a lot of our folks that were paid under that market, market value with that 25-75 salary study. In talking about our organization, I think it's important to mention, you know, with the wolf not being at the door, I hesitate with that because last year, 2016, we lost three major programs in our organization. And we had last year around 630 employees and we currently have around probably 515 to 520 employees. So that's really impacted our organization. We also have been impacted as well with, you know, what's happened in World Herald stories. Obviously, our donations have gone down from last year. Our sales have gone down from last year. That's something that we're working on, but it's, obviously it takes time to build community trust and we're working very hard on that. Another thing that I'd like to mention too, with, with our stores, as I mentioned before, we have volunteers in our stores every day, every month. And a lot of those come from Douglas County. They're appointed by the court to come and volunteer in our stores. We also have folks that come in for either church purposes or school purposes to fill volunteer hours. And then going to our staff in the stores, we have a lot of people in our stores that we obviously don't document their disadvantage or disability. We don't track that information from a retail perspective, but that's something that we're looking into right now. And we employ a lot of people that could not get jobs in the community otherwise in our stores. You may look at them and they may look like you and I, but they may have some type of disadvantage. They may not have childcare. They may not have transportation. They may not have a high school education. So you can't just look at somebody and assume that they don't have some type of disadvantage. And that's...
Yeah. Well, the other, sorry, Jordan Adams, Fraser Stryker, last comment that I would make is, Mr. Goodwillly talks about the predominant use of property. I think that Ms. Bishop here has told, has explained what the predominant use is of this property. I don't know what data he's relying on. I think that was something from 2015 that he may be looking at. I don't think that we were asked any specific questions like that for the use in 2017. So I think that Mr. Goodwillly is relying on old data. The other thing not to lose sight about is that 7 million pounds is what we keep out of landfill anyway. That's, that's product, you know, that's stuff that would otherwise be in the landfill. A lot of that, you know, a lot of those items, you know, so that's, we talk about use. It's a clothing store. This incidental, again, it's not, it's not about how much money may or may not be made by a store. It's more of what the use is and we have programs that are being used at these stores. And again, these items that are kept out of landfill. So.
Pat Barrett, 409 South Seventeenth Street. Mr. Goodwillly made two points that I just wanted to address very briefly. Number one, he indicated that the studies that we had had our compensation experts do may have been weighted towards profit entities. The fact is that the Silverstone study, both of them took into account both retail and non, or excuse me, charitable and non-charitable organizations, profit and nonprofit. They weighted, Silverstone weighted the compensation studies at only 25% for profitable companies, companies for profit, and 75% for nonprofit. So there was no untoward examples only being used of for-profit companies. And the fact is that the, we compete with for-profit companies for employees. When you're deciding whether or not compensation is reasonable or not, and that's my, that's my entire problem with Mr. Goodwillly's presupposition, who's making the decision as to whether or not it's reasonable or not? He is. Well, he's not an expert. We've engaged the experts to try and determine whether or not this compensation is reasonable in the sense that it assists us to retain talented employees that are being recruited by for-profit companies. We need to, we compete with those people. There isn't a pool of people that say, I'm only going to work for nonprofit entities and I'm going to accept much less to work for those entities. The fact is, we are in competition with for-profit entities, so it is appropriate to use those. But the issue remains, who's going to make the decision as to what is reasonable compensation? We've engaged experts to do this. We have the Attorney General looking at this as their statutory empowered to do. It seems to me that we should rely on the experts in this case rather than just making a decision based on someone's belief that this compensation is unreasonable. Thanks.
Next.
Howard Hahn, Q-TAC Rock, sixteen fifty Farnham, Omaha six eight one oh two. I'm here with my partner Buck Heim and Amanda Brewer on behalf of Habitat for Humanity. I think what we left the storyline some month or so ago was that Mr. Boyle had asked a question about what we did with respect to folks that have gotten into new homes, and do we give them anything out of the restor? Currently, that number is two hundred dollars. That, the number was less, and that program started in two thousand and five. So it's nothing that got invented overnight for the purpose of this hearing. The second thing I would say is that I note that item two F on the consent agenda has a resolution authorizing the chair to allow the Department of General Assistance to continue partnering with Habitat Restore. Now, doesn't that kind of halfway say it all? I mean, currently, in addition to the other agencies that we've mentioned in the past, we're also tied up with QLI and Volk Rehab, which I think I'd mentioned last time we were together, and with Mosaic. If, I will be a little more brief than some of my brethren, and just ask if there are any questions for either Mr. Heim, or Amanda Brewer, or me, I'd be happy to answer them. If not, I'll sit down.
Okay. I'll take further public comment from the audience first, and then I'll, when the commissioners, if they want to call you back up, they'll do that. Anybody else want to make comment from the public?
Morning, Commissioners. Andrew Collins of Erickson and Cedarstrom, one zero three three zero, Regency Parkway Drive, Omaha six eight one one four. I'm here on behalf of the Salvation Army, and I have Captain Chris Clark with me as well. And I will, Andrew Collins. I will, like everyone, try to keep my comments brief, but to be blunt, there's some important information that the Salvation Army wants the Commissioners to have, and unfortunately, that's going to take me a few minutes, so I'm sorry for that, but I don't think it's a waste of time. I want to start by saying, you know, there's three organizations up here, and there are some distinctions among the various organizations. And I'm not commenting on any organization other than the Salvation Army, but I want to put a period on the conversation as it relates to compensation issues. That's not an issue with the Salvation Army. So we're here to talk with you about operations, boots on the ground, how the Salvation Army's operations are conducted. That's the issue with regard to the Salvation Army. So Mr. Goodwilly talks about the predominant use of the real estate. That's the issue that I and the Salvation Army are here to talk with you about this In order to do that in a way that is helpful to the Commissioners, we need to get sort of a thirty-thousand-foot view of what it is the Salvation Army does. And at its core, what the Salvation Army does is provide services to, at any given time, between seventy and ninety beneficiaries who need someone's help recovering and functioning in light of their struggles with alcoholism and addiction. And it could be the government that provides those services, but in the case of these seventy-nine to ninety folks, it's not. It's the Salvation Army. The way that the Salvation Army provides those services is by providing these folks with essentially residential treatment services. And those services run the gamut in terms of what it is that they're providing. They start with certainly some counseling. There's individual psychiatric and behavioral health counseling that goes on at the Salvation Army's facilities. There's also group therapy-based counseling. So counseling's kind of the first prong. The second is AA meetings and recovery programming. So obviously, with, when you're dealing with folks who are struggling with alcoholism and addiction, you've got to have programming that's going to help them address what it is that they're dealing with. The third piece is educational services. So the Salvation Army operates many educational programs that help these folks learn the skills and the behaviors that they need in order to succeed in society. The fourth piece that I'd mention is the religious and ministry services. Obviously, the Salvation Army is a religious-based organization. One of their missions is to spread the gospel and share their religion with folks who may benefit from it, and that's part of what they're doing. So certainly, there's a religious and a ministerial angle to the services that are being provided by the Salvation Army. And I've left for last, because it's important to view it in context, but I've left for last one of the most important things that the Salvation Army does for these seventy-nine to ninety folks that it's serving at any given time, is what the Salvation Army refers to as work therapy. It goes without saying that when folks are struggling with addiction, struggling with alcoholism, they need to learn the life skills that are necessary in order to function successfully in society. That involves keeping and holding a job, and paying taxes, and making a living. Just briefly, the Salvation's work therapy program employs essentially forty or more of their beneficiaries on a daily basis. In its warehouse, the Salvation Army employs between thirty and thirty-five of its beneficiaries on a daily basis. In its retail stores, which is obviously what we're here to discuss today, the Salvation Army employs four, two in each of the two locations that are on today's agenda, one on Twenty-Fifth and one on North Thirtieth Street. There are other beneficiaries that are employed in stores in Bellevue, Lincoln, and Council Bluffs. The Salvation Army also employs four to six of its beneficiaries on a daily basis. This is every single day, on trucks, delivering the items that need to be sold in its stores, et cetera. It employs six of its beneficiaries in its kitchen operations. It employs two in its janitorial and maintenance operations, and it employs four at its front desk and in its telephone operations. So these are all angles of the Salvation Army's work therapy, which is one of kind of the five essential aspects of what it's doing to comprehensively and holistically treat its beneficiaries' issues with alcoholism and addiction, and do what it needs to do to return those folks to become productive members of our society. The operations also involve, understandably, and as would be expected, non-beneficiary employees. So these are folks that live and work in everyday society that come and help the Salvation Army accomplish its mission. In the rehabilitation center, the Salvation Army employs eleven of these folks. These, I'll use the term laypersons because they're not beneficiaries, and they're not associated with the Salvation Army otherwise. They're not members of the Salvation Army like Captain Clark is. That's eleven in the rehabilitation center. That's four in the warehouses. That's five on trucks, and that's six in each of these two retail outlets that we're here to discuss today. So there are folks that are helping to operate these retail operations that are not beneficiaries, which obviously is something that Mr. Goodwilly and the Assessor's Office may point to to indicate that the retail operations are not used to provide job training. But as somebody else alluded to in another presentation, that's really taking an improperly narrow view of the operations of the retail store. These things can't be viewed in a vacuum, because there are twelve laypersons that are employed in those retail stores. There's also four beneficiaries. But what those retail stores are is really the public interface, or sort of the tip of the spear, that allows the Salvation Army to provide those comprehensive and holistic recovery services that I described before. In other words, what I'm saying is, that retail store operation doesn't provide just four jobs for beneficiaries. It does that. It provides four jobs on a daily basis for beneficiaries of this program who are recovering from alcoholism or addiction. But it also drives thirty to thirty-five jobs in a warehouse, where thirty to thirty-five beneficiaries are receiving, sorting, rehabbing, and preparing donated items for delivery and sale at the retail stores. It also drives those other jobs that I described previously. It drives four to six jobs on a daily basis for beneficiaries, folks who otherwise would be out of a job and relying on government assistance, among other things. Four to six jobs in trucks, six jobs in the kitchen, two jobs in the janitorial and maintenance services, and four jobs in the front desk and telephone. So what we have isn't retail outlets that are used to provide job training to four beneficiaries on a daily basis, although that's a pretty good start. It's used to drive between thirty-five and forty-five jobs on a daily basis for folks who otherwise would be out on the streets pursuing less desirable activities or perhaps relying on government assistance. The operations of those stores also have other benefits. One of the things that the Salvation Army does is receive donations, but a lot of times it doesn't receive cash donations. It receives donations in kind. The Salvation Army needs a way to monetize those donations so that they can go to the bottom line and help them provide their services to their beneficiaries. The retail store does that for them. They can sell their items at the retail store and monetize those things. The other thing that the retail stores allows the Salvation Army to do is to support the between seventy-nine and ninety beneficiaries that are benefiting from its services at any given time, and also to benefit the other operations of the Salvation Army. So ARC, the Alcohol Rehabilitation Center, is not the Salvation Army's only operation in this area. It also provides social services, including emergency disaster services, food delivery to homeless and food pantry locations in North Omaha, among other locations. They also collect and maintain winter coats for folks who are on the streets who need them. So this is an opportunity and gives the Salvation Army the ability to serve an even broader base of our constituency and your constituencies. Included with that, and what I failed to mention, is that it's also essential to the operation of the recovery of the beneficiaries themselves, because each of those seventy-nine to ninety folks, as they come in, they need clothes to wear. And when they graduate with a job, each beneficiary graduates with a job because it's a requirement of our program, they need clothes to wear to work, and they need items to have in their home so that they can continue to conduct their lives in a successful way. And the Salvation Army's retail stores is able to provide vouchers to those folks so that they can do that. The last thing that I will touch on briefly is the financial results of the ARCs or the Salvation Army's retail outlets here in Omaha, Nebraska. And it's important to note that Nebraska is part of the central territory for the Salvation Army, which is an area that includes eleven states. And the Salvation Army has set up its ARC operations, including its retail outlets, in a group within those eleven states. And the reality is that Omaha's ARC, Omaha's Alcohol Rehabilitation Center, and the retail stores here were never designed to be profitable. They were never designed to even sustain themselves. They were designed with the eleven-state territory in mind. And what that means is that since the Omaha operations are not profitable enough to fund ARC's operations in Omaha, ARC in Omaha is drawing from the other ten states in the central territory in order to fund its operations. So any notion that the Salvation Army is operating a commercial enterprise that somehow has a profit left over to pass up to the Salvation Army or up to ARC is simply untrue. Just to put some numbers on it, and we have provided, my understanding is, we've provided everything that the Assessor's Office wanted in terms of financial information. And if there are other items that the Board would like to have, certainly, we'd be happy to provide those as well. But just to run briefly through the numbers, the combined income of the Salvation Army's operations in twenty, for the year ended twenty, we'll start with two thousand and fifteen, was six hundred eleven thousand dollars. The combined expenses were five hundred thirty-nine thousand, nine hundred seventy-four dollars and twelve cents. So we're talking about a net operating profit that, again, is spent providing services to beneficiaries of seventy-one thousand, five hundred dollars. So after the services are provided to the beneficiaries, there's no profit left over. There's no proceeds. The same is true in two thousand and fifteen. The revenue number was about five hundred seventy-four thousand dollars, and the combined expense was about five hundred forty-two thousand dollars. So those are the, those are numbers. And again, we've provided more comprehensive financial statements to the Assessor's Office. We'd be happy to provide those to the Commissioners if it would be helpful. The last thing I'll mention is something that I, something that I left out as I was talking about the laypersons or the folks who are not associated with the Salvation Army that help the Salvation Army operate its retail stores and provide its services. Each of those folks is required to make a promise when they're employed by the Salvation Army that they're going to help assist the Salvation Army in furthering its mission, meaning they're going to exist and they're going to strive to provide services to the beneficiaries of the Salvation Army's programming that will help them become productive members of society and help them overcome their issues with alcoholism and addiction. And I say that because, yes, we have lay folks that are helping to operate our retail stores, but they're serving an important function in the recovery of the beneficiaries that the Salvation Army serves. They're providing oversight. They're providing feedback. They're providing guidance. They're providing mentorship. They're providing fellowship with these folks, and that's an important function. It's an important piece of what the Salvation Army does for its beneficiaries. And I perhaps have left some things out, but I think I've spent enough time blathering at the Commissioners here, so I'll stop. I'd be, obviously, be happy to answer any questions. I am going to ask Captain Clark if he knows anything that I've left out or has anything. It doesn't look like he does. But he and I are both here, obviously, to answer the Commission's questions. And what we'd like to leave the Commission with is the importance of viewing the Salvation Army's operations as a whole, as opposed to focusing in on the retail outlet, which is a very important aspect of how the Salvation Army serves its beneficiaries. But it certainly can't be viewed in a vacuum, and it certainly isn't the commercial profitable enterprise that some would argue it is. And that's all I have, unless there are questions.
We'll get there if there is. Anybody else in the public? Again, anybody else in the public? Okay. Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Thank you. And thanks to all the organizations for your cooperation and input on this. As the newest member of the Board, this is kind of a case of first impression for me. And so I have some initial questions that I'd like to address to Mr. Goodwilly, if he'd come up, relative to how we got to where we're at.
Mr. Goodwilly, just in the backup documentation, there's a couple of different forms. One of them is a four fifty-one, and one of them is a four fifty-one A.
Yes, sir.
What's the difference?
The four fifty-one is the form the organization provides in years divisible by four. For lack of a better term, it's viewed as the long form. There's more information requested of the organization. We also supplement that with a questionnaire that we've developed that we ask the organizations to provide a little bit more information on. The four fifty-one A is what's called the reaffirmation. And essentially, in years divisible by four, the long form is required. If that exemption is granted, the organization retains that exemption through simply filing that reaffirmation, which basically says, "Yeah, we're doing the same stuff that we did the year before." There is a mechanism, and the reason we're here is there is a mechanism to reexamine exemptions even in years that are not divisible by four. But essentially, one form comes in full application years, and one is interim.
And these forms of application have been in place for some time?
Yes.
So if we went back years and years, we'd find these from these organizations filed over a long period of time?
Sure.
Okay. And in that long period of time, when these organizations have filed four fifty-ones and four fifty-one As, they've been granted. Is that right?
In the past.
Okay. And would it be fair to say then that last year's application was the first one when the assessors recommended denial on these three applications in particular?
On the stores, yes.
Okay. What changed between the historical norm up till then of granting these applications and that kind of denial?
I think, at least in part, our office has always made the assumption then that when asked about the use, the predominant use of the property on the Form four fifty-one, the long application, that when the organization said, "Stores are used in job training programs," our assumption was that all of the employees, or the bulk of the employees, were part of these job training programs. We developed the questionnaire for two thousand and sixteen and asked some specific questions to try and flesh that out, at least in part, because if, for example, you go to Goodwill's website online, you can find job openings. Or if you drive down the street and Salvation Army needs, for lack of a better term, non-program employees, they'll have a Help Wanted sign on the, you know, on the law. employees, they'll have a Help Wanted sign on the, you know, on the lawn. And so, you know, you get this disconnect between what you feel like has been represented, property used in a job training program, and the reality that there seems to be employees coming from other places. So for the 2016 application, we asked some questions about retail stores, including the excerpts that I provided a few moments ago about several of the Goodwill stores. How many employees, how many of them are part of an active job training program? And quite frankly, for all of these employees, the Salvation Army piece on their application, they didn't indicate any employees as part of an active and ongoing job training program. Habitat didn't either. And so it became less likely to us that the predominant use of the properties, the store properties, were not the counseling center, for example, for Salvation Army, but the store properties were, had a predominant use as being for job training. That appears to be primarily used for a retail store to generate money that could be put into some of these programs if there's some profit left at the end of the day. Does that help you?
Yes. So the basis for the change from approval historically to denial in 2016, your recommendation?
Sure.
Was this store question, is that right?
What the organization told us about the operation of the stores, yes.
Okay. Did the compensation question play into that at all?
Not really, not really. And I don't think it's been an issue for either Salvation Army or Habitat. On the other hand, you get your, the, I'll be candid, the pieces in the World Herald got our attention, the same as it got several members of the board's attention, who were quoted in those pieces. And that implies, or it brings into the table, onto the table, the third part of the test, which provides that the property cannot be used for gain or profit to the owner or the user. And the Department of Revenue goes on and it says, okay, reasonable salaries paid to employees will not qualify as impermissible gain or profit. On the other hand, if you're overpaying, and it appears we've got a factual issue, at least on that issue, that's one thing. The other thing that occurs to me is that the state regulation talks about no distribution of gain or profit from the use of the facility to officers, directors, or other employees. There was a significant bonus program at Goodwill. One of the things we're trying to discover is, were those bonuses paid as a result of the profitability of the stores? Because that would seemingly clearly be a distribution of impermissible gain or profit.
But that was not a question in your recommendation for 2016?
Didn't have access to the information, no.
Is that part of your recommendation for this application?
For the Goodwill stores, yes, for this year.
In the statement of reaffirmation of tax exemption, the Form 451A, which is the 2017?
Yes.
Action, it's noted in there, "For county assessors' use only." You know, the date received, the recommendation, denial in this case. But there's no fuller explanation. And I was wondering, is there a document that gives what you've told us here today in more detail relative to the individual applications and your recommendation?
Well, I think the agenda item talks about the reasons for the recommendations. I think there's a list we provided. We also provided a short memo way back when, back in early May, before this thing, before the can started to get kicked down the road a little bit, walking through our reasons for our explanations, too.
The fourth denial is for the Omaha Small Business Network?
There are three, yeah, and I wanted to get to that anyway. There are three parcels owned by the Omaha Small Business Network that really are not part of the store discussions that we're having today. But these are three that do not appear to be being used for any sort of charitable purpose whatsoever. They are located on the northeastern, basically northeastern corner on, I want to say, Twenty-Fourth Street, across the street from some other properties owned by the Omaha Small Business Network. There are three storefront bays. One is completely vacant. One has all sorts of material on the front. Apparently, at one time, it was...
I'm sorry, Twenty-Fourth and what?
Lake. Or I guess maybe a little further than that, but not further, much further.
Between Lake and Ohio.
I'm sorry, thank you, Commissioner Roddy.
What is it? Between Lake and Ohio.
Okay. And there are three bays. One is being used by a for-profit entity as a retail store. The other is completely vacant and not being used for anything. The other thing I think it's most recent use might have been as a campaign headquarters because there's still all sorts of campaign posters and materials on the front window. But I don't know that it's being used for anything that you could call religious, educational, or charitable. So those three are kind of apart from the discussion of the retail stores.
And was there a 2016 recommendation on these properties?
The Omaha Small Business Network?
Yes.
For those three properties, no, they did not apply in 2016. So in 2017, we got a 451 from them.
That's their initial application? They haven't applied before?
Off and on, they have applied, and they've always had a problem with using the property for a charitable purpose. I think the last time they applied might have been in 2015, and at that time, I think there was a vacant space, and then two for-profit entities were using the space. So I think they were denied in 2015. They didn't apply in 2016, and then they're back here in 2017.
I think earlier, and I just want to make sure that we're clear on this, on the Goodwill question, that you indicated that the denial recommendation is based on the executive compensation issue?
And, and the predominant use issue, yeah. We don't believe the, we believe the predominant use is as a retail store and not for a charitable purpose.
Okay. So we've heard, and I believe this is true, that there's been a pretty substantial change in the executive compensation issue year to year, probably from sixteen to seventeen.
Sure.
Does that impact on your decision recommendation?
You know, I've been, I've been thinking about that a lot ever since, oh, gosh, I think it was back in May, when the Goodwill folks made a brief statement, but no real presentation. And I don't know, is it sufficient to say, you know, gee, for argument's sake, we may have been, we may have had an issue, we may have been violating the provision about no gain or profit? And I'm assuming that for argument's sake, that's going to get determined at some point. But assuming for argument's sake that was the case, that the salaries and bonuses were out of line, and you were getting exemptions in those years, is it sufficient to throw some people under the bus and say, "We're changed, and so we should go forward with the Clean Bill of Health"? And sometimes I think, well, okay, great, you know, go forward, you've learned your, you know, you've learned your lesson, and you're not misusing the money anymore, you know? And then part of me says, well, jeez, you know, there ought to be some sort of, some sort of price to be paid, you know, for paying salaries and bonuses that are more commensurate with a for-profit entity than a nonprofit operation. So I guess what I'm trying to say is I don't have a firm conviction on that one way or the other.
Well, presuming that originally you had a position that it was possibly excessive?
Yeah.
Right? And now there's been a substantial reduction in that package, tending to make it maybe not excessive?
Less, yeah, okay. Well, I guess, I guess we're here because I think there's a price that ought to be paid. And that is, they've disqualified themselves based on their past practice.
And if corrective measures were made on any of these questions, whether it's executive compensation or store use income, and they came more in line with what you feel are the guidelines for a not-for-profit statute, status, would you change your recommendation in years going forward?
I think we need to see the nature and the extent of the changes in some detail. I don't know what we're going to see. I don't want to speculate by hypothetical.
Right. You know, we kind of want to have these types of activities in our community, and so I think is incumbent on us to try to encourage them to continue the good things that they do for our community, within the rules that we have set out for allowing them a tax exemption. I think it might be helpful for people to comply with our standards if we had clear, bright-line standards out there. It would seem to me that it might be difficult for them if we say, "Well, you're not in compliance," and they say, "Well, how do we comply?" And we go, "Well, we're not exactly sure, but, you know, give it your best shot." So would it be possible for us to promulgate, you know, some more specific, I guess on the, on the store question, it would be, you know, maybe a percent of income or an income stream that would be more precise. And maybe on the compensation thing, it would be whether it's the not-for-profit Association of the Midlands standard, or somebody's accepted standard relative to compensation standard, that we would say, if you comply with that, then we're going to find you generally in compliance.
I think that's a, I think that's a fair suggestion. I would, I would say, however, that given the sort of weasely words and statutes and regulations, it would be hard to find a bright line, I think, when they use words like, well, the statute uses the word exclusively used, but it's been glossed by the courts for years as predominant. So how much is predominant use? In the regulation dealing with compensation, reasonable salaries are okay. Well, okay, you know, and then there's no, there's no specific standard articulated for what a reasonable salary is. So to some degree, this is always going to be really, really fact-dependent, and the minute you try and draw some kind of a bright line, I suspect, you'll find something on the far side of the line that just doesn't, that just doesn't feel right. So on the other hand, it wouldn't, it wouldn't hurt my feelings if at some juncture there was some push for the legislature to restructure that entire section of 77-202, the deals with permissive exemption.
So the legislature sets out the 77-202 parameter?
Sure.
And then it's left to us, specifically to you, to interpret that for purposes of making a recommendation on the application?
Well, there's kind of a couple of intermediate stops. One of them is, the Department of Revenue does have rules and regulations in place that they think interprets 77-202 in a more, a more detailed way, you know? And then there's a backdrop of significant case law from the State Supreme Court that's out there, too, that sometimes isn't particularly consistent. You know, if you've ever, you know, if you've ever been to a mound conference in a baseball game as a player, and the pitcher's in trouble, and the manager comes out and says, "Don't walk this guy, but don't throw him anything good to hit." Well, you know, that's a little bit internally contradictory, and so you sometimes see that with the Supreme Court case law out there.
And on behalf of Douglas County, you've been doing this for some time, is that right?
About a decade.
Okay. Over that period of time, in addition to these four entities, you've reviewed a lot of applications for a tax exemption under this provision, is that right?
I suppose. I have never tried to quantify it, no.
Well, don't we have a lot of these applications every year?
We get eleven, twelve-hundred a year.
Okay.
Everything from the tiniest little mom-and-pop church in South Omaha to much larger-scale national organizations like some of the ones we have here today.
Right. So the not-for-profit healthcare community, for instance, would file 451 forms annually, is that right?
They do. Well, 451s in years divisible by four, and then subsequent 451As.
Right. And those are large, I mean, in terms of our community, representing billions of dollars in holdings, not-for-profits, is that right?
They sure are.
Okay. Have you applied these standards, particularly relative to executive compensation, to say large healthcare organizations in the not-for-profit exemption realm?
No, no, we haven't. We're not set up to do it. If you want to, if you want to staff us with some sort of CPA and have us ask additional financial questions, we'd be happy to ask them. We aren't really set up to do that, so no.
Okay. So it's a question of resources, really, rather than equity or fairness in the application?
The Goodwill is kind of, I'll be candid, the Goodwill is kind of a one-off, you know? Had there not been the lengthy investigative piece that walked through their nine-nineties and some of their other operations and what they paid out, we probably wouldn't be having this discussion. On the other hand, you know, if somebody throws something in front of you that seems to be relevant, would you really want our office ignoring it?
Well, I think that you make a good point. The proportion that I'm trying to get at is that you heard testimony from the Goodwill representative that this may represent to them, if they are denied and found to be not tax exempt, three or four hundred thousand dollars.
Okay.
Okay. That seems to me, relative to the wider community that we're talking about, particularly the healthcare community, to be a relatively small amount. If you were talking about, you know, some entity that held large tracts of real estate in Douglas County, and for whatever reason was granted a tax-exempt application, if those real estate holdings had been taxed, might represent millions of dollars in revenue to the county. You understand the distinction that I'm making here?
Sure.
Okay.
What I'll also tell you is that the majority rule, the overwhelming amount of case law, both in Nebraska and other places, is that hospitals and medical facilities should be exempt and are exempt. I think partly because of the nature of the service they provide. I had a little incident doing some home improvement not long ago, and it was kind of handy for me to go and have a place where I could get my hands stitched up. The definition of charitable in Nebraska is, does it provide for the mental, social, or physical benefit of the public, or an indefinite number of persons? Providing that kind of care seems to, the consensus around the country seems to fit that kind of thing. What we're talking about here with these retail stores is maybe a little bit different in that I know there are people that believe in retail therapy, but I don't think it's recognized, but I don't think it's recognized as therapeutic in the same way that going to get medical care is. And in fact, there are cases here in Nebraska that are kind of all over the lot, I must say, that deals with essentially commercial operations conducted by nonprofit entities. So I get where you're going. It feels odd to know that there are hospitals that own significant, medical entities that own significant property with significant value, you know, and we're not having this conversation. But I think both legally and factually, it may be a little bit different.
Well, I bring this up, and I don't mean to single out the healthcare industry, except that there's been discussion, and I know Commissioner Morgan has an active interest in this as well, relative to the scope of the holdings of the healthcare industry.
Sure.
I think that they are currently the largest employer, not only in the city of Omaha, but the state of Nebraska. And so they're, they have an enormous economic footprint in our community, which is almost exclusively tax-exempt from a property tax point of view. And so if you were to, you know, make a pyramid of, you know, big entities down to mom-and-pops, they'd probably be close to the top. There might be others. I mean, I'm not...
Sure.
...singling them out. I'm just saying that they, they're very prominent. These organizations would be... These organizations would be considerably lower down on that scale, just in terms of economic importance and potential revenue impact. If we're talking a few hundred thousand dollars for goodwill, I don't know what the others would be, but it, would, would they be in that ballpark as well?
Probably less, because there are fewer of them.
I see. So, to bring this to a point, then, how do we get some consistency in application of our exemption standards from the top to the bottom? I mean, treat the, the larger entities the same as you would treat the, the smaller entities. What would be your recommendation on getting some consistency there?
Well, I mean, look, when we get applications, we try and treat them all the same. But obviously, there are gonna be some factual differences between the, the use of the property between some organizations and others. And you also have the backdrop of longstanding court cases that seem to say this medical stuff is gonna be exempt. So, we, we, we try and apply the, the standards that we have in front of us, statutorily, regulatorily, and regulatory and, and case law, in as even-handed a manner as we can. But there are, I think, some inherent inconsistencies in all of those things. You know, you get a hospital bill and it doesn't feel too damn charitable, I gotta say. You know, and yet there's the case law saying, "Yeah, we think the medical care provided by, by hospitals constitutes a charitable use of the property where they provide it." So where are you gonna go with that?
Just relative to that, is it the same standard, the same applicable statutory standard for hospitals as it is for these other groups? Or is there a different category of tax exemption considerations for hospitals?
No, the same five, we apply the same five-part test to hospitals that we apply to everybody else. If the property owned by a, a organization, organized and operated exclusively for educational, religious, charitable, or cemetery purposes, is the property exclusively slash predominantly used for educational, religious, charitable, or cemetery purposes? The property cannot be used for gain or profit to the owner or the user, and we've kind of talked about the whole notion of reasonable salaries. The fourth and fifth tests are, in this day and age, mostly gimmies. One is that the property cannot be used for the sale or consumption of alcohol for more than 20 hours a week, which is why some of the legion clubs are partially exempt, because the bar area is open for more time than that. And then the fifth test is the organization cannot discriminate in its operation or its membership based on race or ethnicity. What I will say is, we have, on, on some occasions, had occasion to deny hospital or applications for at least portions of hospital property. Some years back, Allegiant had, they opened a place out at their Lakeside Hospital that they were billing as the, the primo health club in the Midwest. It was a members-only club, and as a practical matter. The reason I remember the facts of this case is I still wore the state's uniform then, after several years of goading the county assessor to deny the exemption and pursue it, even if the county board of equalization granted the exemption. The assessor sought to deny, at least for the portion of that Allegiant property that was being used for the members-only health club. The case went down to Turk, and the reason I know that is 'cause I tried it on behalf of the assessor's office, and the commission denied the exemption for at least that portion of the hospital, because that portion of the hospital wasn't being used for a charitable purpose. So, we do try and look at these things against the backdrop of the existing statutory and case law.
So you get executive compensation numbers from all of these organizations every year in their application?
No, actually, we don't. What we do, what we do ask for, for some is, you know, gross revenues and, and how much you approximately have provided in terms of, of charitable care, you know, for example, in the health club providers. There's no magic number, but no, we, the, the financial piece has really not been a big feature for us, largely because of resources.
Largely, I'm sorry.
Largely because of resources.
I see. So just to recap, so I'm clear. On the goodwill, Salvation Army, and Habitat applications, your recommendation is primarily based on store use, is that right?
Store use for all three. The goodwill has this extra financial piece on top.
Okay. And in your opinion, the change that goodwill has instituted in compensation from last year to this year does not change your recommendation on that as a component of your recommendation for denial?
No.
And the other one, the small business thing, is simply they're not using it for any charitable use?
No, that's, that's sort of off to the side from the retail pieces, yeah.
And these four denials, is that the sum total of your recommended denials for this year?
We, we may have had some others. The other thing that happens occasionally is we will have a little, a little chat with the nonprofits to get more detail, you know, and sometimes they will withdraw an application. I had that very chat with some of the, I guess it's CHI now and not Allegiant. But they, I don't know if they meant to do it or not, but they, they filed an application for the personal property in that taxable health club portion of their building. And I picked up the phone and I called, and they said, "Do you, you know, we've, we've fought this fight before, do you want to fight it again or not?" And they withdrew the application. So, not so many denials this year, more last year because it was a full application.
If I understand correctly, goodwill and possibly Salvation Army and Habitat have appealed last year's decision?
No, no. They, you folks, you folks granted the application.
Oh, I'm sorry, the other way around.
But those are, but it's currently pending, yes.
On, on those three?
Right.
Okay. And has there been any discussion between those three, independent of that litigation, which I think is, is it at Turk or where?
Yes.
Okay. With you, relative to how to come into compliance for a tax exemption going forward?
Uh, we had a, we had a lengthy discussion, you know, about 10 days ago with Salvation Army, where Mr. Collins and Mr., uh, Mr. Clark and, and they provided us some additional information that we had not had with respect to their previous applications. But that, but otherwise, not really.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
I, I have a couple of questions for the applicants. Evans.
Adam?
Goodwill, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Jordan, Adam.
Adam, sorry.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
My understanding from what you said before was that in 2016, goodwill employed 14 people at $100,000 a year or more, is that correct?
I don't know if it was, I think, yes. I think it was somewhere in that neighborhood. Yes, you are correct.
Okay. And currently, that number is three, is that right?
You are correct.
And that's Ms. Bishop and two others?
You are correct, yes.
Okay. So, tell me a little bit about that reorganization. How did, how did that come about? And how, how do you go from 14 to three?
If I, I'm gonna defer to, to Ms. Bishop on that.
Sure.
I think she knows a little bit more about the facts of that than, go ahead.
So, to go from 14 down to three, we've had some involuntary resignations, involuntary resignations, some positions. I would say the majority of the positions have not been rehired because of, obviously, financial constraints. And also, you know, we're taking the time right now and reviewing the organization, as we stated before, working with Quantum.
So, after having made those adjustments, and I presume that you relayed those to the assessor, how does that bring you into, in, in relation to these, these other comparable organizations that we talked about, I think it was Kansas City and maybe Iowa City and others?
Right. I don't have, obviously, the facts from them in front of me, but I believe Iowa City has two folks that are paid above $100,000, and Kansas City, I can't remember if it was two or three.
Yeah, actually, it's in Mr. Goodwill's letter. He said that the, um, the, the NAM study was based upon organizations of more than $10 million, and that the mean for CEO's salary was $169,127. The mean CFO was $96,562, and COO salary was $112,635. In Kansas City, uh, excuse me, in, in Iowa City, the CEO and one other employee received compensation of more than $100,000. Kansas City office, it was only, uh, one, it was a CEO that made $100,000.
Now...
And, 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 sorry, Bishop, that was, again, that was based upon 2015 data, that survey data.
Okay.
And I think, too, if you do some analysis on organizations, nonprofit organizations in Omaha, you find that the folks that are paid over $100,000 ranges from three to four to five.
That would be good. I'd be interested in that. You know, it seems to be kind of, for goodwill, two things. I mean, one of them is this executive compensation thing, which you've taken some steps on, and the other is the, the store use question, which applies to you and the, and the other applicants here. The question I have is relative to store income. Apparently, it generates a fair amount of income for the organization. Was that used to pay executive compensation?
No, the, basically, with our retail stores, is, to, to kind of point out what, what that retail profit covers, basically, it covers the costs for the federal programs that we have that we pay above and beyond what we're given from those federal programs. It helps pay our administrative support expenses to support the organization, and then any of our other internal programs that are not federally funded. That's something that, then, we obviously put that money toward.
So heretofore, when there were 14 people making $100,000 plus, in the revenue stream of, of goodwill, where did that revenue come from for, for that compensation?
So I think it's hard to tie back where $1 versus, you know, where does $1 go to this place? We, basically, we have one account, one bank account, and the money flows in and out of that account. So, our accounting processes don't track, okay, we made, you know, say, $10 in revenue here, and this is how it's dispersed. It goes to cover costs for the retail stores as, you know, as far as salaries, benefits, taxes, things like that, things to operate the stores, to keep them open, utilities, also, our administrative support that, frankly, if we didn't have, we wouldn't have an organization. So we have to worry about those costs as well. So to, to track, you know, this salary is covered by this pot of money, our accounting system doesn't do that.
Right. If I understand correctly, you know, the standard as articulated by Mr. Goodwilly, it might behoove organizations in the future to have a little more segregated accounting of where the money comes from and where it goes to, because it seems like, you know, there's two-pronged tests. Is your store competing with private stores doing kind of the same thing? And is the compensation generated by that activity going disproportionately to compensate, you know, executives or whoever? And so if you were able to say, "Well, you know, the store doesn't compete for these various reasons, because we provide some, uh, social good," and the compensation for whoever is not directly derived from that, because one of the things that I think struck people in the analysis, and, and one of the things that was outlined in the, in the media coverage, was it appeared that you had a, a, a program for training people that was, I'm just gonna use a, a number, and it's not exactly accurate, but say it was $400,000. And you had an executive compensation package that was like $450,000. And so it appeared on its face that you were doing more executive compensation than you were doing, you know, kind of like your core mission of, I think you said, changing people's lives or helping people. And so if that were, you know, more apparent and easily to, to see and perceive, you know, that might be something that would be good going forward. That said, Mr. Goodwilly makes the point that by reducing from 14 to three, people making $100,000 or more per year, would result in, again, rough math, a million dollars in, you know, undedicated revenues from somewhere to somewhere. And that if your tax bill for that year is gonna be, I think, $300,000 or $400,000 was the, was the estimate that actually you used, that that, that could be relatively offset by those savings. Is that correct?
Not necessarily. This year, we've taken on a lot of unexpected expenses due to the Omaha World Herald articles, and we are currently, as of April, operating in a deficit in our organization of about $125,000. So it's, obviously, we're seeing the impact from, you know, the retail, the donations, the sales. Obviously, you know, some of the funding sources that we have had in the past, we don't have those anymore. So we've, we've realized a lot of change in the organization because of the articles, a lot of additional expense that, you know, we normally wouldn't have.
Right. And I think that, you know, it behooves the community to have activities like goodwill and Salvation Army and Habitat provided, and we're interested in encouraging those going forward. These adjustments are painful, and we recognize that, but I think that it's important that we try to work together to, to work through this, whether or not we can reach agreement on this matter here today or not. I, I think that the, the steps that you've taken are in the, in the right direction, and we'd encourage that going forward. We'd also encourage maybe that you work as closely as possible with our assessor on these questions that, that would allow us in the future to maybe revisit this matter.
And Commissioner Cavno, that's a, we're gonna need Mr. Goodwilly's help on that, because you heard what his justification was, that this is a penalty, he thinks, from previous years. And I, I, I don't know, you know, and, and your example of a hospital is a great example. I mean, we don't have any, I mean, the hospitals aren't up here telling us how much their CEOs make, how many people they pay over $100,000. There's no review of that at, at all, and, and, and we're being singled out on something that's, it's based upon some, some facts that are happening going forward. And what Mr. Goodwilly is gonna have to account for at the next level, 2016, 2017, the standard is, that, you know, is the decision unreasonable and arbitrary? And I think making a decision based upon punishment for, for what Mr. Goodwilly thinks happened in the past, i- i- is not fair, and it, and it's not reasonable. So I, I would just point that out.
Yeah, I appreciate what you're saying, and, and all of the groups that presented here today are well-represented, make cogent arguments on, on behalf of their clients. This is a difficult decision, and, you know, it's arrived to over time, and things have occurred or come to light over time that frankly make it more difficult. We want to get to a point going forward where we can have consistency and people can rely on, you know, whether or not they're gonna have an exemption kind of on a, on a, on a fairly consistent basis. I don't know if we're gonna be able to reach that today. I mean, we have cases in litigation, and we have applications and recommendations, and we might not be able to get all the way there in one fell swoop. But I think that honest people working for the good of the community can get to a place where, you know, we can, we can make sure that the good work that these organizations do, the benefits of the community can continue, and that fair and predictable tax policy can be in place as well. I mean, it, it behooves us to make it as clear as possible to groups and citizens how to comply with the law, what we are requesting. So I think that we, you know, we'll, we'll try to work on that, and it behooves folks who are... And it behooves folks who are applying for exemptions to, you know, comply with the rules that are there. They say that, you know, the hard cases make bad law, and that's kind of applicable here. We're in a hard case, we're in the middle of it. I don't think that we can get through it with one decision here today or one decision down at Turk whenever they come down with their decision. But I hope that working together over time, you know, we can get there to a consistent outcome. So thank you for coming today, Habitat, thank you, and Salvation Army, thank you. We appreciate your input, and we'll keep working on this. Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Commissioner Craft?
Yeah, my voice may be a little weak. I am going to abstain on this. I've missed the last five meetings, and last week I was exhausted during the executive session when this was being discussed, since I'm recovering from bypass surgery two months ago. And so since I'm not fully informed, I do have some questions. First of all, Teresa, since I plan to abstain because I am still recovering, am I allowed to ask some questions?
Teresa here at County Attorney's Office, yes. If you are abstaining for a conflict, I would advise you not to participate in the discussion, but it's my understanding that you are abstaining simply because you want to become more informed before you would vote. So I believe that you can participate and ask questions as you need.
Thank you. And am I allowed to express opinions as to what I feel?
I think that you can do that as well, Commissioner.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that I wasn't violating any of the open meetings laws or anything unethical. For Polly Bishop, a quick question. As, last year after the article in the paper, a lot of us, including myself, were outraged. I've mellowed since, because you've been making a lot of very positive changes. You, one of the issues he brought up was that you were paying less than minimum wage because of peace worker or however you were doing it. And that, my understanding is now you're paying minimum wage, is that correct?
We actually, we had started looking into that in 2016, and as of January 1st, no one is paid under the minimum wage.
Okay, I'd love to see you pay a living wage.
We should pay a living wage.
Yes.
And I believe, actually, I believe most of the folks, they're in our Ability One programs, and I believe they're paid at the WDR rate.
WDR?
It's part of the Ability One contract. It's a wage determination rate, so it's actually sometimes above minimum wage.
Okay, when you use acronyms, it confuses me, okay? So wage determination rate, okay. Do you have any information how boosting the wages paid to these individuals has changed any of their living standards or lives?
I think with some of those folks, obviously, it's a case-by-case analysis that we have to do because some of these folks do receive grants, you know, from, they receive like Social Security, different benefits like that, and we have to just make sure that, you know, if we are paying them more than minimum wage, we have to make sure that their hours in minimum wage don't, you know, make them exceed what they can bring in as income.
And have they experienced any change in their independence?
You know, I can't speak to that specifically. There are a lot of folks in our Ability One programs that were impacted. I believe we had about thirty-five people, and I don't know specifically from person to person what the impact is.
Miss, that's all I have, right? Oh, yes, one other question. Transportation is a major issue for many people who have disabilities and who have very low income. Do you provide transportation assistance so your employees can get to work?
We actually, what we like to do with our retail stores is have them close to the bus lines just because it's important for them to, at least if they can get to the bus stop, it's close to the store, they can walk. We actually, for our Ability One programs, because there's really, you know, if you're down on off at Air Force Base, there's really no bus line that will take you there, we actually do provide transportation for those folks down to the base.
And are you charging them for that?
I would have to look and see if we are. I can't answer that right now, but I can find out.
I certainly hope not, because since you're earning so little to begin with, transportation alone can be a major part of the cost of getting to work.
Certainly.
And I would like to see more assistance in getting to work, so they can continue to work. And the same with the, I don't need to have the other nonprofits come up, but that's the same question I'd like to hear from the other ones. Mr., is it Mr. Barrett? Okay, you don't need to get up. You made a very excellent point about having to pay three hundred thousand dollars upfront and the fact that everything would be appealed one way or the other. I've gotta catch my breath for a minute. Excellent, I believe it was you who made it, excellent point, because that's three hundred thousand dollars you can use very efficiently. Mr. Goodwilly also made excellent points. And one question for Mr. Goodwilly is, what is wrong with having a help needed sign or hiring? Having the right number of employees is no different than having the right location to run your business.
Commissioner Craft, there's nothing wrong with having a help wanted sign. What it did, though, was indicate to us at least that perhaps the assumptions that everybody had been making in our office, and, you know, probably incorrect assumptions from jump, that everybody that was employed, you know, in these stores was somebody who was part of an active and ongoing job training program.
I don't think they ever said everybody.
Well, the representation always on the applications was stores used as part of job training program. And to be fair, they're not representing that all the employees are part of a job training program. That was an assumption that we had made.
Well, a school would run itself on the students, all of the people here are students?
No, no.
Okay, that's all I really, I just wanted to hammer in. I usually don't like picking on you as much as other commissioners do, but...
Commissioner Craft, with respect to your remarks, Pat Barrett, 409 South Seventeenth Street. Mr. Goodwilly, I was impressed by his candor, but not necessarily the weight of his argument. He essentially told you that he believes the compensation paid was unreasonable. He believes that the Omaha World Herald articles helped lead him to that conclusion. And he said that with respect to 2017, that essentially Goodwill needs to pay a price, needs to be penalized in the future. And I'm just saying, we have empowered Mr. Goodwilly, apparently, with those, that discretion. It seems to me the discretion best lies with Turk and the courts to make that determination with respect to 2016 and into the future, and also with the Attorney General, who is looking exhaustively at the issue of whether or not there's been submission direct with respect to Goodwill. The decision ought to be left with the experts.
I think we all understand that. Thank you. I have no further questions.
Commissioner Boyle?
I am appalled that we are dragging nonprofit organizations in front of us at all. And I do want to clarify something, and I may have to call the World Herald reporter up to go under oath and testify to this, but I believe the story about the salary, matter of fact, I'm certain the story about the salary occurred after the hearing, because I made a wisecrack that turned out to be kind of true. I made a remark, I said, when people were giving statements and kind of addressed to Mr. Goodwilly, I said, "Well, nobody's living in fair acres, are they?" And at the time, it probably was, I didn't realize how quite true it might have been for one of the organizations. So that appeared, that the money, the salaries being paid occurred after the hearing took place. Do you want to testify to that, Mr. Burback? Come on up, we'll swear you in. I've got other questions, too, under oath, but anyway. So, I mean, that's something I want to clarify, you know. And the other thing is, I don't think what people are being paid makes a damn bit of difference. If you look at the five, you know, criteria, it does say that no one's the prophet. What do you expect to do? I mean, we do have the Salvation Army here, who is largely, I mean, it is a religious organization, well-respected, and the contribution they make to the community is incredible. Have you ever been at the Crox Center? Have you looked at what they do? Have you been to the, have you worked with people who are receiving treatment? Have you had any life experiences? If you have, you've been in touch with the Salvation Army, healing people and helping. And it's very disturbing, and I think a real tremendous disservice to our community to bring these people in and flog them periodically. Interestingly enough, when we talk about Goodwill, Douglas County has a contract with United Way, and I just had them check the figure, which is why people are walking around back here and stuff. We have a contract with United Way, and I am the county board representative that sits on the committee with the presiding judges of the district and county court and also the court administrators and other people involved in the criminal justice system. And the contract we have with United Way, which the county board signed, is that we work with them to have people who are before judges diverted so they don't go to the County Corrections Center for some kind of offense. We even have one or two sex offenders involved in this program. But we do have the more misdemeanors, and we do have, of course, felons, drunk drivers and so forth. They are diverted into a program to work at Goodwill, and at present, we have fifty-three people there. So, thanks, Goodwill, instead of beating you up. You are helping us, you are keeping fifty-three people out of the Douglas County Correction Facility. You are probably keeping, and I know for certain, people from losing their jobs. You are keeping families together. You are doing such subtle work behind the scenes that is incredibly valuable to the community. Children, whoever the head of the household who may have committed an offense is not in jail, what happens to the kids, all these things spiral down and cost huge amounts of money and also are very destructive of family life, but you help prevent it. The, there's a lot of things I want to talk about, but I guess basically, to me, the test of whether or not you're a nonprofit, I think all of you meet it. And whether or not you're making whatever the money that is paid, I think that's something you have to deal with, and I think you've dealt with it very successfully. Whether or not it was excessive, I'm not competent to say that. I'm not a compensation expert, but I was surprised, I'll tell you that, but that's okay. I've been surprised before at different things, obviously. I am very concerned that we are on a real slippery slope, and I hate the phrase, but I think we are, and I think it's a bottomless pit. Because what is coming next is a challenge to the Archdiocese of Omaha, to the home they built for students at UNO at Seventy-second and Pacific. Is that really religious or educational, or is it just housing? How come that building is tax exempt? And I believe over in the Scott facility at UNO south of Pacific Street, that they pay taxes on those buildings? Aren't those kids going to school and sitting side by side, and one has tax-exempt status, the facility does, and the other one pays taxes? What about students that, for whatever reason, don't live in that kind of a dormitory? They're paying taxes when they live at home or rent from someone? Very unequal treatment, that's coming next. And also, a case that actually was before the Douglas County Board was Prairie Life Center came in and said, "How come when you go to a cardiac rehab facility, it looks just like ours, and they're not paying taxes and we are? And what about the why?" So we have a lot of private organizations that are operating very similar services to nonprofits, and they're paying taxes and they want to know why. So pretty soon what's going to happen is we're gonna have to say, "Yeah, I guess you're right. They do look the same, the product is the same." I was involved in cardiac rehab when the doctors came down and talked about it, so I had personal experience about what goes on there, and it sure looks like the same thing to me. So that's coming next. And I think it's just a matter of time before we come to a conclusion that we completely disrespect and don't count on and don't appreciate the contributions that are made by nonprofit organizations in our community. Now, there are abuses, there's no question about it, and I agree on some that are being discussed here today that maybe go too far in really stretching it. But during the course of this meeting, I did comb through Chapter Seventy-Seven, which deals with the status for nonprofit organizations. And you know livestock is nonprofit, you don't pay property taxes on livestock. How's that make you feel? You know, a lot of things are exempt from taxation because there are powerful special groups that get in and influence the legislation. And that's just the way our government works, we all know that. We've had, we've heard of that for years. It's just, it's incredible, the exemptions that are out there, and yet we pound and pound the nonprofits. So in the course of this, I did find an interesting case, but kind of interesting. I was going through this, and I asked our legal counsel, and it doesn't apply, but it doesn't look like it does, but an interesting case. It's Bemis versus the Board of Equalization of Douglas County. It's one ninety-seven Nebraska, one seventy-five, two forty-seven Northwest Second, four forty-seven nineteen seventy-six. And what it said was that the county assessor had no right to file, taking, file an appeal made by the Board of Equalization. Now, that was pre-Turk, so, and a lot of laws have been written, which have changed things. But it's kind of interesting, back in seventy-six, the county assessor couldn't do what they're doing now. And so I'm gonna close with that, and I'm not going to, I've got a lot of questions, I suppose, for people. But I'm very concerned about what's happened. I think it's very disrespectful of the charitable community. When this first happened, I asked Mr. Goodwilly, "What is the deal? Why are you doing this?" And he said, "Because they don't, they aren't charitable enough." And I thought, "Well, good God, you know, what's next?" I remember, you know, a person I know, and I'm probably getting in trouble for this, but those of you who, did you know Father Gass, who was a pastor at Christ the King? Did you know he drove a Jaguar? I mean, what is that all about? I remember going to a rosary, and I parked quite a ways, it was packed, and I started trudging up the driveway, and I looked, and here comes the Jaguar and parks right at the front door, no parking zone, gets out, and, you know, I always thought that was pretty scandalous. And I also know of a church, a very beautiful church, that had a lot, a lot of money, Catholic church, and the pastor decided there wasn't enough blue in the stained windows. So he had all these windows redone at a cost of a big bu- bunch of money. Now, is that charitable? I don't know. Okay, well, listen, I'm gonna get off this rampage, because I think I'm probably alone in this mission, which doesn't bother me, I've been, it's been six to one for a lot of times, and I have, I'm used to losing. I do live with Ann Boyle, so... So, but I really think on principle, you know, we need to draw a line, and this is it for me. I think if we don't take a stand and support the nonprofit, the incredible contribution that's made by all of our nonprofits, we can't afford to do the things we're supposed to do. County government is an arm of the state, and we are charged with providing a safety net, a safety net. And if we don't have you as partners to hold on to that safety net, we're in deep, deep trouble. So I'm gonna make a motion to grant the exemptions that are before us for the nonprofit organizations. I hope I get a second, and I hope it passes. If it doesn't, I'll consider other action that I hope turns out being favorable for the nonprofits. And lastly, I'd say I apologize for your having to be here.
Motion dies for lack of a second?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, Commissioner Doodle, second the motion?
I will second Commissioner Boyle's motion.
Any discussion?
We're granting these exemptions?
For denying the exemption, so that's the...
Allowing.
Allowing.
Oh, that's different than what's on the agenda. I apologize, I withdraw my second.
Okay. Motion, no, motion dies for lack of a second. So, that's, motion dies for lack of a second, so we're back to where it is. And it's back to you, unless you're through, Commissioner Moore. Are you through?
Yeah, I definitely am.
Okay. Commissioner Morgan?
Because, you know, we have this legal matter going on, I'd like to make a motion that we lay it over for three weeks, it has to be decided by September, and I think we'll have all the commissioners here at that time. So, I was doing that, Commissioner Kavanaugh, because you were going to be gone for a few weeks.
There's a motion...
I'll second that motion.
Okay, there's a motion to second. Any further discussion on that, Commissioner Moore?
The only thing I'd say is, I do agree with Commissioner Boyle in what Habitat, Salvation Army, and Goodwill contribute to our community, but we do have a serious legal matter, and they're spending a lot of dollars with the assessor's suit that came before the World Herald article. So, that was, of course, taken.
Commissioner Duda?
Thank you. Now that the motion before us is to lay over, I really wanted to talk about the original motion that was before us, and I'm not sure, perhaps that should wait for three weeks then, if we're not going to vote on this today. I wanted to respond to a few of the statements that were made.
You can respond.
I'll be brief. I'm also used to losing six to one votes, Commissioner Boyle, as I did last year on this very item, and it was the very following week that the World Herald story broke on this, and there was some discussion even at this meeting about how could we perhaps reverse the stand we had just taken, because it was just so closely timed within a matter of days. But at that meeting a year ago, Mike Goodwilly recommended the same thing he's recommending today, and now all of a sudden, we're trying to attribute this to salaries. His stand did not change as a result of that story. His stand is consistent today with where it was a week ago, or a year ago, excuse me, and so is my stand. I have not seen any changes in facts or in law, I see nothing different today than there was a year ago, other than a story about salaries. And I agree, that's not particularly relevant to us. We have absolutely no criteria for saying what's a fair salary and what's not. We've got the law that says these are the specifications for what qualifies and what doesn't. We have Mr. Goodwilly, who I think is a very knowledgeable person on this topic, and we have our own attorney to grant us legal guidance on these complicated matters. A year ago, this board chose to not follow their legal advice on a six to one vote. But, but this business now of trying to say, "Well, it's because of the salaries." No, it's not. That wasn't present at the discussion a year ago. That, in my mind, has absolutely nothing to do with it. Thank you, I just wanted to clarify that.
Teresa?
Teresa, York County Attorney's Office, two things. If the board is considering a motion to lay over, it may want to consider both D and E for that motion, because they are, they both relate to this, the same organizations, one is the actual retail stores, and the other is the personal property. And then, I think three weeks from now happens to be the July Fourth holiday, so I think it would either have to be two weeks or four weeks, because we have to, I don't believe we meet on that day.
And, no, for the record, we were discussing both together when we read them out, so both are in place.
So, we'll go with the four weeks, and we'll take Teresa's as bias, as we do a hundred percent of the time, and we'll go with D and E, if that's okay with the rest, the second?
Nobody, well, we can do it unanimous consent, nobody, nobody say anything, we're good. Are you through?
Yes.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
No, I was just going to say, I have been interested in what Commissioner Morgan has said over time, relative to this entire question of tax-exempt status. It directly impacts on our property tax base in a big way, and I commend him for bringing up this question. It, I think, behooves us to move in a measured fashion on this going forward, so that we have a fair and easily understandable standard to help people who do make valuable contributions to our community, as Commissioner Boyle points out, comply in seeking tax-exempt status. I think that we can get there, I think we can get to a better, fairer place, and I think it's important that we all get there together, so delaying it for a month so that we could have Commissioner Borgerson here and Commissioner Kraft here, and act as an entire board, I think makes a lot of sense, and hopefully, that will get us to a place that we can move forward in a, in a better fashion. Thank you.
Commissioner Boyle?
Wait a minute, PJ.
Thank you, Chris. I do want to respond to what you said about the exemptions. What I've talked about is, so that it's clear, there is, I have concerns that you see doctors' buildings located around our community that are basically having doctors' practice there, where they own the practice in those buildings, I'm not sure, are doing charitable work, and certainly are tax-exempt. And I think that's a matter that, in some other states, they're taxable, and I think that's something that we want to continue to look at, to be fair. These organizations, I have very good feelings about what they do and what they have done in our community for a long, long time.
Commissioner Boyle?
Well, along those lines, as long as we're going to be taking a month to tell them whatever it is we're going to tell them, I would like to ask the assessor's office to do the work preparing the information that Commissioner Morgan has brought up on a number of occasions, and that is particularly buildings that are owned by nonprofits but are used for nonprofit purposes, and that includes medical clinics and so forth. I think if we're going to go doggedly after these people that are religious orders and so forth, that we ought to maybe take a look at this other, these other apparent violations, so I'd like to ask you to do that. What's the matter? You don't get it?
Mike Goodwilly, Douglas County Assessor, Register of Deeds. Help me with a little more detail, Commissioner.
Well, there are some, there are some medical buildings that are owned by hospitals...
You know, Commissioner, let me stop you. Several years ago, Commissioner Morgan asked Roger Morrissey, then the assessor, to get him some information about how different states treat hospitals and medical facilities. And I did some extensive research on that. I remember burning midnight oil, I provided him a memo, and I assume he provided it to Commissioner Morgan. Do you want me to find that for you again, Commissioner?
Sure.
I'll be happy to.
I think we were talking, we've seen those pilot programs in other states...
We have.
Payment in lieu of taxes, we've seen in Minnesota some of the things, and I think that's a discussion not for today, but at some time, we ought to be discussing it and at least talk about it, because many, many people are not aware that a lot of those medical buildings on Eighty-Ninth and Dodge, or on the north side of Dodge, where you have vacant property, suddenly become tax-exempt. And we've seen the school districts talk about that, especially Sixty-Six. Suddenly, the HDR buildings are going to be sold, and those properties go off the tax rolls.
Sure. What I will tell you, Commissioner, is we've been, I've been kind of collecting information on pilot, payment in lieu of tax programs. There's a lot of it in Boston, there's some in Minneapolis, there are several other jurisdictions. It's, it's been a good solution for political entities that have a high concentration of things like hospitals and universities that are typically exempt, but they still continue to use government services like streets and fire and police and all of that kind of thing. And some jurisdictions have been able to negotiate payments in lieu of taxes from those, those entities. I will tell you, thus far, it appears to be a more municipal sort of thing than it is a county thing, you know, because typically, if you're, you know, if you're within the city limits, you may be using more, more directly, you may be using more city services than those of the county. But, sure, I mean, the trick to this, it all seems to be, is to get the nonprofits that have qualified for exemption to the table, to acknowledge that, gee, we use some services, and we'll pony up some money to help pay for them.
Right, and it's also to be sure that those facilities are being used for charitable purposes, and not just purchasing the doctor's office and operating it exactly the same way as it was before in a different building. Patrick Bloomingdale did some work on this two or three years ago, and I think it's a discussion for another day, some months from now. I think you still have your hands pretty full with valuations and what's going on with the appointments.
Thank you very much, Mr. Goodwilly, I look forward to that, getting that memo again, I'm sure...
Sure, I'll be happy, I'll be, Commissioner, I'll be happy to share.
This will maybe give you something that we would approve, would that be a shot? Thank you.
Maybe a little bit.
Thanks, Mike, thank you, Michael.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Commissioner Morgan? Commissioner Boyle makes some good points about the proportionality of our, I guess, review of tax exemptions, so that I think it would be a good idea going forward, if I heard Mr. Goodwilly correctly, to maybe apportion some resources for the assessor's office to go in and look at the largest tax-exempt organizations in a more robust fashion. Obviously, we've gotten some fairly modest organizations here relative to size that have gotten close scrutiny, and it might behoove us, from a revenue point of view, and just be consistent, to give similar scrutiny to these larger organizations that Commissioner Morgan and Commissioner Boyle have indicated.
Okay, no further discussion, there's a motion on the floor to table items D and E for four weeks. Motion passes. Items G, H, and I are left on the agenda, what's the will of the board?
I would move approval of items G, H, I, and adjourned.
Speaker, before the Salvation Army leaves...
Hold on, Mike, let's, you got a motion, let's, is there a second?
Second.
Go, are you trying to say something?
Yes, I am, my computer won't pull up the data, so I just, City, County Clerk. We are denying exemptions for a number of vehicles. Salvation Army, nineteen, twenty thirteen Ford Salvation Army North Core, a twenty twelve Ford Salvation Army North Core, twenty, two thousand eight Chevrolet, Salvation Army North Core, twenty sixteen Dodge, and United Methodist Ministries, a twenty twelve Chevrolet. Now, the treasurer's office is here, Mr. Kavanaugh, maybe he could explain why you don't get the exemption, I think it's kind of fitting that you have a chance to speak. What?
No, he's on the other ones. Oh, okay, all right, excuse me, excuse me. He's saying it's on the other ones, the cards.
Thanks, Dan.
Which, which item are you...
Chief Deputy Treasurer.
For clarification, which item are you discussing? I'm not sure I'm on the right item.
I'm on I.
Thank you.
Tim Kavanaugh, Chief Deputy Treasurer. Those items were, are recommended for disapproval because of process, one hundred percent process, failing to follow it, according to the timelines set forth by the Nebraska Department of Revenue, they were late in their application, and by, by the guidelines set down to us, we have to recommend disapproval. One of them was way early, it's not till October, so that can come back.
Okay, when you said, what guidelines are there? Can you tell us what those guidelines are? Are they state law, or something that's...
Yes, it is, it's under Form 457 from the Nebraska Department of Revenue, authorized by Statute Seventy-seven dash two oh two, Section One, letter C and D. It sets forth the instructions for seeking tax-exempt status for motor vehicles.
And it gives deadlines?
Yes.
Okay, what does it say about a deadline in there? You have to license it thirty days after you buy it, or what does it say?
It says, "All applications for exemption must be filed with the county treasurer of the county in which the motor vehicle is subject to tax, not more than fifteen days before, and not later than thirty days after the registration date of the motor vehicle. For a newly acquired motor vehicle, the application must be made within thirty days of the date of purchase." Exempt status for a motor vehicle extends through one registration period. Failure to apply for tax-exempt status within a lot of time is a waiver of the exemption for the registration year.
So, they blow it, if they lose it for the whole year, and if they only use the car, then they have to pay full taxes on it?
That is the recommendation to you folks, which you have the final say.
Do we really have, do we really have the ability, a final say, what does that mean? We can...
Well, that would be something for your, for your attorney.
See, I've never heard that, because we're always told we have to do what we're told to do.
Well, that's what we've always done down here, is we've made the recommendation to you, and you have the final say, then nothing's changed.
Teresa, York County Attorney's Office, the applicable statute with regards to, the short answer is, Commissioner, that the board should follow the law. The statute applicable to motor vehicles says that this board should consider the motor vehicle exemption and prove or deny the exemption on the basis of law and the rules and regs adopted and promulgated by the tax commissioner. Any, the parties, if they're unhappy with the board's decision, do have the right of appeal, and they would go to TERC with, with regards to that exemption status.
So, I guess, Tim, that we don't have any authority, which is what I thought, we're just, you know, which annoys me no end, because, and I know it's not your fault, but why do we get things on our agenda to vote on if we can't vote no deal? Why, you know, we're only told, you know, we get this on here, and we have to vote yes, or else we're in contempt or something, I don't know what.
And again, I want to reassure, it's totally about process and our perspective.
Well, I understand, believe me, I, I'm glad you're here in the audience, but it's, we don't have any discretion about much, really, we don't.
But there is an avenue of appeal.
Yeah, but I mean, going to TERC on, it will take three years to get valuations reversed, and the Methodist probably don't even know about it. Okay, thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Commissioner Morgan?
I'm going to pass what Tim said is accurate, and Teresa, that we really don't have the ability to give that exemption, so, that's it. So, did we get a motion to...
There's a motion to second it right now, to approve, I mean, to follow the orders in there, so, any more discussion? All right, roll call, I mean, please vote. Commissioner Boyle?
Motion passes.
I'm going to take some discretion here, I'm going to skip the Board of Corrections and go into the Board of Commissioners to get to Mr. Torville, and we should be pretty quick here, so with that, we're going to call to order the meeting of the Douglas County Board of Commissioners, roll call, please.
Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Kavanaugh, Mr. Duda...
Eric.
Mr. Kraft...
Eric.
Mr. Morgan, Mr. Chair.
Here. Item A is approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners being held Tuesday, June sixth. Item B is approval of claims submitted for payment and process due Tuesday, June third, twenty seventeen. What's the will of the board?
Move approval of items A and B.
There's a motion to second, seeing no questions, please vote.
We did, oh, yes. Motion passes.
Item two is consent agenda, there's nine items on the consent agenda, what's the will of the board?
Commissioner Rogers, if I may, there was a emergency item that we were hoping to add to the...
I'm going to add that after consent.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay.
Move approval of the consent agenda.
Okay, there's a motion for the consent agenda, is there a second? Okay, there's a second for the consent agenda, seeing no questions? Sorry, Commissioner Morgan, is this passed, or?
The what?
Are you passed? Is this, did you, are you wanting to speak, or is this held over?
No.
Okay, Commissioner Kavanaugh?
I have a couple of general questions on D, E, F, and G regarding the general assistance items. Hi.
Hello, Melissa Seawick, General Assistance.
We have these resolutions authorizing us to continue partnering with various entities, and I just wanted to get on the record what exactly we're partnering with on each one of them. So, on item D, we're partnering with Mount Moriah Missionary Baptist Church, for what?
Well, for all of them, all of our clients that are medically able to participate or to work or have to participate in community service as far as being eligible for a program. So if they are receiving rent and like primary healthcare benefits from us, they're required to do X amount of hours per month, and so we partner with local nonprofits in the community so they can go ahead and go there and volunteer and complete their community service hours. So it varies, they can do pantry work, they can help with custodial, some of it is front desk reception, kind of depends on the place, what they're required to do.
Okay. Particularly in item F, we have Mount Moriah Baptist Church in D, we have Sienna Francis' House in E, in F, we have Habitat Restore.
Yes.
Is that Habitat for Humanity that we were talking about this morning?
Yep.
And what exactly do we do with them?
We currently partner with Habitat Restore, their south location and their west location, and we have clients go there and complete their job training hours. They do a wide variety of work there, just because, they do accepting donations, they help with customer service, some of them help with some admin tasks, some cleaning, they kind of work with whoever we send, they're really not picky with a specific clientele, they really work with what client we send them and try to fit what they want to do in the community.
I, I just note that, I mean, these are the exact stores that we were just talking about. That are helping us in the community and... And we're helping them, so that might come up again. And then Open Door Mission, the same?
Yep, they kind of, most of these places are, other than Mount Moriah, it's typically janitorial, but a lot of them are big enough where they kind of, there's a wide variety of things for our clients to do there, and it's, they all have quite a few of our clients. Goodwill also, we have clients there, but we already have a current contract with them, so we're not renewing it because it's already active.
Gotcha. Thanks very much, you guys do great work.
Awesome, thank you.
Thanks.
Commissioner Boyle.
Well, General Assistance is the department that is on the ground, there's others that do as well, but definitely, General Assistance is the department on the ground that does what we are supposed to do, and that is provide the safety net. And these items on this agenda just are such obvious proof of the need for us to have these nonprofits that we're beating the hell out of, that we absolutely need them to deliver services. We could not possibly set up an operation like the Open Door Mission, housing people, sheltering. We couldn't do the same with Sienna Francis' House and all the work that they do, and we couldn't set up Habitat Restore to do the things that they do. And yet, at the same time, you know, here we are, knocking them all to hell, knock it, quit it, but these, this is the reason, there's a connection that we're just ignoring, and if these organizations are gonna have to start paying taxes, maybe they won't be able to help us. So what do we do then?
Okay, seeing no further discussion, there's a motion to second to approve the consent agenda. Seeing no items? Yes.
Volunteer Fire Department on here?
I'm gonna take that after that.
What's that?
This is the Irvington Department, I'm on Pocahontas.
Okay, I just thought maybe you were...
No, I might go pants, but I'm not...
Seeing no further questions?
Just trying to watch your back.
There's a motion to second, please vote.
Motion passes.
Okay, there's an item that we need to declare an emergency on, and my understanding is it's a special designation liquor license, it would have been here on time, but there was confusion whether it was the city of Omaha or us, and it was caught up over there, they sent them back over here. The event is July one, so I guess my understanding is it needs some, some special...
I would declare an emergency for purposes of considering that item.
How second it?
There's a second. There's a motion to second to declare an emergency for consideration of the item. Please vote.
Motion passes.
Item under special consideration, approved special designated liquor license for Ryan's Food and Spirits, one two 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 one, Mary Plaza, Omaha, Nebraska, six eight one four two, for an event to be held July one, two thousand seventeen, six p.m. to midnight at Ryan's Food and Spirits, same address noted specifically. Is there anybody that wants to address this item? Seeing none, what's the will of the board?
Motion to approve.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion to second, please vote.
Commissioner Kavanaugh. There we go, motion passes.
Item three, recognition and proclamation. Item A, resolution recognizing Douglas County Health Center Administrator Jim Torville upon his retirement. I'll turn it over to Commissioner Duda.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is Jim Torville's last Tuesday as a county employee, and I did not want him to disappear riding off into the sunset without at least a little bit of acknowledgement and recognition on our part. He has, I mean, clearly, this is one of the top key positions in all of Douglas County government, with about four hundred and fifty employees out at the health center. Jim has offered us tremendous guidance out there for almost twenty-four years now, and has chosen to retire. We're excited about who's coming in, but I'm, I'm also excited to celebrate the, the great twenty-four years of leadership that Mr. Torville has provided for us. I would like to read the resolution, if I may.
Please.
Whereas on July twelfth of nineteen ninety-three, James Torville began his employment as administrator of the Douglas County Health Center, which at that time was called the Douglas County Hospital, and whereas during his tenure, Mr. Torville has been a well-respected and enduring figure at the health center, and whereas James Torville is known for his dedication to his work and his high degree of commitment, respect, and compassion towards the health center residents and staff, and whereas many, among his many contributions, James Torville was instrumental in the nineteen ninety-seven major remodel of the health center that improved the living conditions of the residents and the working conditions of the staff, and whereas James Torville was also instrumental in the opening of the short-term rehabilitation unit in July of two thousand fourteen, and the current implementation of the first-ever electronic health record system at the health center, and whereas during his tenure, the Douglas County Health Center has maintained its status as a five-star nursing home facility, and whereas James Torville will be greatly missed by the residents of the Douglas County Health Center and his coworkers and friends in Douglas County government, now therefore be it resolved that this board hereby expresses its sincere appreciation to James Torville for his twenty-four years of dedicated service to the residents and staff of the Douglas County Health Center, and further expresses the board's best wishes in all of Jim's future endeavors dated today's date, and I would move for the approval.
There's a motion, is there a second? All right, let me say, Jim, it's been a pleasure working with you for twelve years, and I want to thank you for your service, there's a lot of, there's some accomplishments definitely have there, and you should be commended for the five-star rating, the willingness to transition to the efforts to, transition to short-term, some of the trends, so I can say this, enjoy your time, appreciate your service.
I'd like to add to that, that five-star rating, if I may. This is the second-largest nursing home facility in the, in the state of Nebraska, and to the best of my knowledge, it is the only facility that has been five-stars from the get-go and has never wavered from its five-star rating. It's something that I am very proud of, and I did almost nothing to earn it, other than helping hire Mr. Torville and the staff. They're the ones that have earned this status. From time to time, we may have a little bit of controversy about priorities on funding, how much is appropriate funding for, but nobody has ever questioned the quality of care that we're able to provide out there. I am, I'm very proud of this facility and the work that it does, it is a best-kept secret in Douglas County, it's something that I firmly believe every resident of Douglas County would and should be very proud of if they understood a little bit better what good things are going on there for some of the least fortunate of our community. So, Jim, I personally just want to thank you so much for giving us such a big chunk of your life and for leaving such a great facility for us to, to manage. You've, you've done good. Thank you.
With that, oh yeah?
If I may, Commissioner Rogers, are we taking other comments now, or are we gonna wait till after the vote?
No, I just didn't see any other. If there's somebody that wants to, please feel free. I was looking at the board, but of course you aren't on the board.
Well, I'll defer to another member if they have something they want to say.
No, nobody's up, you, it's your world.
Just Dan Ash, Douglas County Clerk, I can't really add much to what Commissioner Duda, Commissioner Rogers said, but the times I'm out at the health center with Jim, I'm always, I always admire how he seems to know all the employees' names, even all the residents' names, and just a nice guy, a real nice guy, and I think he's, just echo what Commissioner Rogers and Commissioner Duda said, he's done a lot, and his heart's always in the right place, and I'm gonna miss having him around, so.
Any other comment? Seeing none, please vote. You want to talk, Jim?
Motion passes.
Okay.
Just a little P.S. to that, Jim is low-key, and he did not even want this on the agenda, this was me that put this on the agenda. We are almost against his wishes, but having a little tea out at the health center from one to three on Friday, a reception for the employees and staff and friends, anybody that wants to say their thank yous to Jim, they will have the opportunity from one to three at the health center for a reception. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Item, citizens' comments, is there anybody in the audience that would like to comment on an item that is not listed on the county commissioner's agenda for the day? Are there any citizens' comments? Again, are there any citizens' comments? Seeing none, we will go on to committees and finance, Commissioner Morgan and Boyle.
I think we've got a meeting set up for, what's the date? Week from today, there'll be some discussion here at that time.
Okay.
And it's important, and I just make a note, if I'm stating it correctly, the increase from our property tax revenues, the increase that we have in the budget from that source is one point eight percent. Am I? That's the increase in the budget from sixteen seventeen into seventeen eighteen. So we'll have questions that people can ask at that time and do that all openly.
Commissioners, just if I may?
Wait a minute, Patrick, wait, you in line. Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Yes, I would like to note that this is a little bit of different procedure budget-wise than, I've been employed at least in the last couple of years, and I would urge the, the board to maybe take some time to hold a series of these briefings. In the past, we've held committee hearings on pretty much every department and elected official, and this year, it was done a little differently, and so I would note that next week would be the first time that the public has had an opportunity to be briefed on the budget and comment on it, and as it does not have to be approved at that time, I would hope that we would maybe consider some subsequent hearings, and, you know, we don't necessarily have to go all the way back to what we did before, but I think that, that more opportunities for the public to participate in the budget baking process and be aware of what we're proposing would be good. I also am interested in the number that you just shared with us, Commissioner Morgan, what was it relative to the increase in revenue?
On the property tax side, it's one point eight percent increase over the previous budget year, and Joe, you may want to make a couple of comments. What we tried to do was talk to each department, rather than have them there for that hour-and-a-half with questions or whatever, was try to get them to meet our budget request after, you know, Joe reviewed our numbers and looked at things and their salary increases and so on, which our salary increases are around the three percent, and rather than just go through, we hardly get any public there. Now, Doug Kagan is one of the people that's there making some comments, but that was a feeling that it would be better, and then those that couldn't meet the target number that we've given them, that they come in and, and make their requests publicly in our open board meetings.
Yeah, that's correct, Commissioner, the, the expense of operations funded by property taxes up, up one point eight percent, but just to refresh everyone on what I, the update I gave last week, which is still consistent, is the budget we're recommending still has an eight-hundred-thousand-dollar deficit attached to it, and we just think that that's within our margin of error, so what we've really been striving for is to have a, a balanced budget, and we're close to that, we're not quite there, and that's one of the things we want to discuss next week at, at the finance committee, and in preparation for that finance committee, I sent out to the commissioners, and then also to the Nebraska, Nebraska taxpayers for freedom, all the detailed information by department on expenses, revenue, and assumptions, so I'm looking forward to a, a good discussion next Tuesday.
And I appreciate that, you know, I spoke with Doug Kagan earlier today, and I think that it's, you know, his field, more discussion over a longer period of time and more detail on this would be in the public interest, I think that that's, goes without saying. You know, in my experience with public budgets, take the legislature, for instance, they'll spend months going through public hearings, department by, by department, before they even propose a budget, and it would strike me that although we don't have to necessarily do that level of detail, that a one-day briefing and adoption of a budget proposal might be a little precipitous, and that the public might be better served by a more robust public airing of what we intend to spend their money on. I don't know that we had any input or discussion, at least I was not part of it, relative to the budget guidelines proposed by our finance director, I'm not taking exception with those, I'm just saying, the elected officials on this board had no public discussion relative to those guidelines, we've had no public discussion relative to the one point eight percent estimate revenue increase that we've just heard about, and, you know, there's only two really key components of what we do that impacts every single taxpayer in Douglas County, that's taxing them and spending their money, and I think that we're gonna have a robust discussion on taxation, particularly at the Board of Equalization level and setting of the mill levy later this year, we should have an equally robust and transparent and public discussion of the spending portion of this. I don't know what went into the guidelines that we just heard about from the finance director, and I, I would like to, and I think the public deserves to hear what those guidelines are. I don't know how the calculations arrive at an eight-hundred-thousand-dollar deficit or a one point eight million-dollar increase in property tax revenues, I'd like to hear that, and I think the public deserves to hear that discussion as well. So I'm, I'm just pointing these out as kind of procedural suggestions, that we've got some time, we don't have to approve the budget a week from today, even in the committee level, and we should take the time to allow the public, Doug Kagan and people like him, to come in and, and express their opinions relative to how we're gonna spend the public's money. I think that's a really important function of this board.
Well, let me answer part of it, to correct one thing, and Joe, I think I'm correct, it is not a one point eight percent increase in revenue, correct? What it is, is the spending is increasing out of that revenue one point eight percent.
That's correct, yes.
It isn't a revenue increase of one point eight in property taxes, because that's gonna be an unknown, and I have some concerns about that, because we're hearing that in certain areas of our city, and I could name some regency, that over fifty percent of the homes went down, and there's homes that went down from what was originally stated, for example, when we first saw the seventeen, and we talked about it here when citizens were coming, some homes went down as much as seven hundred thousand dollars from the preliminary amount of taxation. So that's one item, that, you know, there's gonna be a real uncertainty about the property tax revenue, and that will be an interesting discussion that we'll be having. The other thing I want to mention... The other thing I want to mention is in the six years that Mark Kraft, myself, Boyle have been doing the budget things, there's never been anyone, when we've had those hearings, that said, hey, I'm gonna make a motion that we cut that department $100,000 or whatever. You know, we've never had that. Joe, do you recall that?
I'm sorry, I was talking to Commissioner Boyle.
Oh, Patrick. Where we've had those meetings up there and listened to the departments, and we've said, okay, let's cut that department after we listen to it, $50,000 or $100,000. It's never happened. Is that accurate?
The way the budget process works is, and it's always worked, is that the departments make their presentations, and then we will have a Finance Committee meeting like we're having next Tuesday, and we'll review the budget in detail, and if any of the commissioners have a different opinion as opposed to the requested budget, then they can make a motion to amend that budget before it gets accepted as the proposed budget.
And I don't know if Commissioner Boyle has any comments. He's worked hard on this.
Wait a minute, let me get a little, let me get a little process here. Are you through, Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Oh, I'm sorry. Sure, I'm not. And I appreciate the comments that you made, and particularly the clarification on the 1.8 spending increase rather than revenue increase, and that's good to know. The bottom line is, I am not comfortable with the idea that we will be presented a budget a week from today in committee and expected to act on it the same day. That's, to me, not the best way to review the expenditures of what is like a third of a billion dollars of public money. I appreciate the work that you and Commissioner Boyle have done, and I don't question that at all, it's just that no one else has been involved in that work. No other elected official on this board has been involved, and I appreciate the work that our Finance Director has done as well, but he's not elected by anybody to set priorities. We are. And I take that responsibility very seriously. I don't think that there's any greater responsibility that we have than taxing and spending the public's money. And in order to do that in a transparent way, we not only need to do the work, and I commend you and Commissioner Boyle for shouldering that this year, but to appear to do the work. And there's been no appearance in public of this budget document at all. And until next Tuesday, I don't think that there will be, and at that point, that's its debut. Well, the debut should not be, you know, the beginning and the end. The debut should be just that, debut, here you go, take a look at it. Whether or not people want to comment on it, they need to have the opportunity to review how we spend their money. And so if the intent is to rush into a budget briefing and then a motion to approve the budget on the same day next Tuesday, I just want to be on record that I'm not going to be comfortable with that procedure. I think that we should take more time when we spend this amount of the public's money and allow them to review, and if they want to, comment. And I think that, you know, we've had that in the past. It appears that, you know, we might have departed from that a little bit this year. Not that that's any criticism, but I think that we have time now to do that important process, and we should take that time to do it.
Let me just make one statement.
I have one last thing. You know, in terms of your comment relative to the property tax valuation, I know that you've held town hall meetings, and Commissioner Borgerson has, Commissioner Rogers has, I have, and I will be holding one next Monday at St. Matthew's Lutheran Church on Sixtieth Street, just north of center, at 6:30 PM. And we have had G.I.S. develop for us some very good maps relative to property tax assessment changes, whether they are decreases or increases, property by property, countywide, that are available at these hearings. And they go to what you were talking about in terms of specific neighborhoods or regions of the county that have experienced changes, whether they be increases or decreases, that I think are very instructive. And so we urge the public, again, come out relative to the taxing question, the same way that we urge the public to come out relative to the spending question.
Let me make some clarifications. The vote next week is not to approve the budget, the vote will be in 903. And as of last week, the vote, the meeting next week was set up specifically, I think specifically, well, I know I asked for one, because there's an item I want to suggest to come back in. So, and also, I know Commissioner Boyle's gonna speak, but at least let me lay out. Process so far was, the co-chairs came to the board and specifically laid out how they were gonna function this year, and the board agreed to it. If they would've, if the board would've agreed anywhere else, they would've made some changes. So the board did sign off on that to some degree, because they clearly brought in and said this was the direction they were gonna go, and it was there. But also, I think they did acknowledge next week, I mean, they acknowledged last week, and I brought it up too, that next year, if they can, we can find a way just to get some knowledge on that, because the only people that came were the changes. And so I just wanted to put that in the record, that there's not a vote next week. The vote next week is to clarify and make some additional requests and suggestions. So the vote, and that will be in 903. So with that, Commissioner Boyle.
Commissioners, can I clarify one? You said vote. It's not a vote, it's a meeting. There's a meeting in 903, it's the Finance Committee meeting. You couldn't vote next week if you wanted to.
Right. So that was my point, there will be no vote. It is kind of a pulling together and reconciling. So, where you go, PJ, I wanna just have, go to Commissioner Boyle.
I'll yield to Mr. Commissioner Morgan to make his comment.
Oh, thank you. The only thing I want you to know, that like that 1.8%, that information was sent to all the commissioners, and it had other information, and information has been sent to commissioners on a regular basis. Am I accurate, Mr. Lorenz? I know, I see their names on them.
Yeah, we've been trying, as we've gone through this, to show all the submissions as they've been made by the department and have the comparisons to last year and to target. And, you know, I do agree that the committee has always tried to be very transparent and very open, and so I'm a little surprised that people would feel that we aren't.
That's all. Thanks, Mike.
You still want it?
Well, I can understand what you're seeing, Jim. You should've been here. You drew a big grin on my face when you talked about not being transparent. Let me tell you what it was like when Kathy Kelly was here and Steve Walker, just naming names. I was in my, I had nothing to say about the budget. I was never included, never got any information, no, nothing. And when I finally was told what the budget was gonna be, Kathy and Steve walked in and laid everything out, and here's this flood of information. And so I would make comments about, you know, how come we have two copy machines in our office 20 feet apart, things like that. Well, that, we'll deal with that later. And I've always described it as I felt my head getting patted on, like you just be a nice little boy and shut your mouth. That's what happened. That is truly what happened. And if you weren't on the inside, if you weren't one of the four who were voting on things, you simply were an outsider. And that's the one thing, I'll be real candid, I told Patrick, I said, when you take this job, if you do that, I swear to God, I'll have your head on a stake, because everybody has to be involved. No more of this going to get four votes and pulling crap on other commissioners, because that is what happened. I mean, on serious issues. I'm moving the assessor's office to the Miracle Hills. I was the chair of the committee that took the chair of now, and I discovered an item on the agenda Thursday afternoon for the next Tuesday, moving the assessor's office out of this building into Miracle Hills. I said, who the hell did this? And we know it was my good friend, Commissioner Duda, through the building commission. So anyway, that was my surprise. So I called a meeting on Tuesday, not to get off the subject, but just to tell you how out you can be. If you feel out, you have no clue as what being left out is like. So I called a meeting, held it here in the public, had people come down and talk about what they needed, where we should go and do this sort of thing, and it was gonna fail. And we're walking out the door, Commissioner Duda, it was gonna be laid over and discussed for, and my good friend, Commissioner Duda, turned to me, and that was the process, he said, oh, we're gonna vote on this today, I got four votes. So, and that is how life works, but the budget was a classic example, the most god-awful thing I've ever been through, and just totally in the dark, not knowing what the hell was going on. So I can sympathize with you, but it was, you should've been there, is all I can say. Let me say a couple of things here. The reason that we did this was that we had held hearings with all of these departments and elected officials, dragged, had them come in, and we had these meetings, and great attendance by commissioners and all the rest of it, and some people from the public, mostly Doug Kagan, who's a terrific asset to our process, I'll tell you. So anyway, he's there, and they're questioning, good questions, and what I found was, you know, I took on the sheriff's crime lab, and I got Senator Ashford to introduce a bill to merge it, and nobody on this board supported me. And so it was, I went down there and worked it, and Brad made it his priority bill, and then things unraveled, and, you know, I don't know what happened. I testified down there, I had several police officers from Omaha there, all, I was absolutely outnumbered, and Mr. Sucey on the other side, a defense lawyer, stepped up and said how ridiculous this duplicate crime lab is. So in any event, you know, and I don't mind, those are the scars you get, and that's why I'm joking about the six-to-one vote all the time, which is okay, except it's a little frustrating. So to hear you talk about this thing being a failure, we have had so many meetings with the same people over the same budget, that unless they decided to lay off or close branches or stop performing some function that's not mandated, that it was gonna remain the same. And Joe, the letter went out March 1st, right? And what did it instruct them? Was it basically one or one and a half percent on salary?
Yeah, it was a call letter that went out to all the departments, and everybody was copied on it, and it specified that all departments should increase their budgets by 1.5% of salary, and then it had certain provisions in there, how you should treat the extra payroll, and it was, you know, the annual letter that goes out that really states the goal of having no property tax increase. And like you said, it went out to everyone involved, and anyone with the budget, on March 1st.
Well, and it's an efficient way to do it, because there's, I don't see any point in dragging in offices. We already have, at least I have, a tenuous relationship, like the Assessor Register of Deeds and some of these others, drag the treasurer in, say, you know, what are you gonna do? The clerk, who historically, as you know very well, your brother did a terrific job in keeping things under control, and Dan is following in his shoes, drag him in, take him time, go through his budget, when he submitted it, and we saw that he did what we asked him to do. So, and again, all the commissioners are being advised of this. And then as an additional nag, I went to Joe and said, give me some of those budgets. And so I went through them. I took them home and went through them, combed them, and looked over them, and couldn't see much. I do have a department that I want to see merged, which eventually will happen, and I'll bring that up at an appropriate time. But, so, the bottom line is, it was very transparent, and we are not like the state. The state is running a huge deficit, a huge deficit, and we're all gonna get pushed down by it because of what happens, particularly with the care of the indigent. We're gonna be paying dearly for that, so I don't know how this is all gonna work out, but we're not the state, thank God. And in spite of all the revenue they have, a lot of it coming from the eastern part of Nebraska, by the way, we're not in that situation. We have property taxes and inheritance tax, that's about it. So I'm, you know, I'm comfortable with what happened, and I don't want to say I resent, but I resent what you bring up, that it wasn't transparent or available. I mean, you had all the information, Jim. I took budgets home and I looked at them, and we're going to have a, you know, a public hearing where, you know, people can come in and make comments, but it was really a waste of time to bring these elected officials in and do what they've done for the last three or four years repeatedly. So unless we're gonna tell the treasurer, shut down three branches, there's no point in having them in and having them scramble and tell us why we shouldn't. So, and then what we did is, we said, okay, those of you who can't do this, come in and talk to us. And they came in, I think last week, I lose track of time, and it was all the people that are concerned with justice. The county attorney, the public defender, the sheriff, all these people that come in, we have, and we appropriated extra money because of the situation we have with justice, the criminal justice system primarily. So I guess all I'm saying is that I think we're on a good course, and I'll tell you what we'll, maybe we'll do next time, because I'm gonna do that in July, I have a meeting of the 911 group, they're coming, not 911, but Emergency Management. And they asked for a committee meeting, and I said, no, no deal. You come down here and talk at the podium. I'm not gonna have any more committee meetings, and I urge all the rest of the commissioners to stop it. Stop private committee meetings. They are private, up in 903, no one shows. You never see the world, Harold, you never see any news media, nothing. It is totally nothing. Well, I mean, unless there's something that, you know, I don't think he's, we have any coverage of it, to speak of, and not on a regular basis. And we have huge items that come up, and I'm gonna ask all the commissioners to quit the committee thing and bring it right here before the podium, because, you know, that's the way it should be, I think. That committee meeting is failing because it's not transparent.
Okay, thank you. Before I go to Commissioner Kavanaugh, let me just know for the record, the meetings are transparent. The meetings are on YouTube, the meetings are taped, and the meetings are accessible at my request.
Okay, let me clarify that. There's never any public there, except for Mr. Kagan usually.
Well, and Mr. Kagan's usually not there, depending on the committee, but only budget time. So I just wanted that for the record. Mr. Kavanaugh, Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Thank you. Yes, they are posted, and the clerk does a great job of putting people in a position to access them. The legacy media, Mike, and we're both in a generation that's kind of adjusting to this, is becoming something of, part of a larger media market. Social media is the platform of, you know, maybe not a majority of our society, but a growing majority, it'll be a majority of our society in short order. And so, you know, the normal media access or the normal way that people access information that we grew up with is rapidly changing, and the clerk's office has kept up with this, and that's why posting the committee hearings allow a wider audience to participate in at least observing what's going on, which is an important part. It's how people perceive the business to being done, as well as the business being done. I mean, I take to heart what you mentioned before about how things were done in the past in kind of a, you know, closed-door, top-down fashion, and it's my impression that that bears a significant resemblance to what I'm talking about here today. What I think costs us very little, but is very valuable, is to engage in a more robust public discussion of each and every department and each and every elected official's office on at least an annual basis. I think that's just responsible government accounting. And whether we do that in the committee forum or we do it here in public hearing, makes no difference to me. I think we're paid to do it, I think it's part of our job. I think that what we're going to get next week in terms of a one-stop-shop briefing on the entire county budget isn't adequate, it's not enough. And I did not sign off on this, and there were, you know, a statement made that we all agreed to this new way of handling the budget. Well, I for one did not, and there's no record of us taking a vote to go this way, and I think that what we have done here is kind of what you're talking about, in terms of the committees have taken it upon themselves to decide all of these questions, and furthermore, to do it without a committee hearing, which is one way to go, I don't think it's the best way to go. I think, you know, maybe there is a middle way between what we're talking about that might be productive, so that maybe this year, we take this opportunity to have a series of these briefings rather than one briefing, over a period in July, to allow us to break this into smaller parts. We've had, or will have, a half dozen town hall meetings just on the question of property tax valuation. And I don't know that that's an unreasonable thing to do, I think it's a responsible thing to do, and I commend the commissioners who have taken the time and the effort to hold them. I think it's, again, part of our job. I think the same, maybe not a half dozen, but maybe three or four hearings on the important aspects of spending the money is equally part of our job, and that's, you know, that's what I'm, I'm interested
what I'm interested in pursuing. I am not comfortable with a one-stop-shop of, here's the budget, take it or leave it, and move on, that I kind of interpret next Tuesday's briefing to be. I asked at last week's meeting for some documentation from Joe Lorenz, and it may be in my office, I haven't seen it, but it could be-
It's on your desk.
Okay. It could be a start of the discussion that I'm talking about. I got from my files this morning, what was that document for last year? And it was, you know, a culmination document of weeks and weeks and weeks of individual hearings. This document, which I presume that I'm going to see when I go look at it on my desk, is a culmination of none of them. It's just, here's the conclusion. So, there's no discussion, there's no debate, there's no input, and I think it's important to have those things. So, somehow, I would hope that we could work towards a more robust and transparent budget process this year. Kate?
Commissioner Boyle?
Well, I think, Jim, what you need to do is, you need to read the budget, for starters, like I have, I believe Christopher Morgan, but I have read it, and we have responsibilities individually as commissioners to do that, if you're going to vote on something, and I'd suggest that you have time this week to read the budget, look at it, and bring up items that you want to cut or increase. I mean, it's right here, for example, here's the Douglas County Health Center, and we spend X number of dollars on salaries, $168,297.94. I mean, if you want to increase that or cut it, I mean, if there's something that you want to do with this budget, and be really transparent and make it robust, then make suggestions. I'm looking forward to what you come up with, that you want to cut, or you want to spend more money for, after you look at the budget, you know, with all due respect. And I think there's plenty of time to do that. I really would urge you to do that, and, you know, I looked at it, and that's what I did come up with on some things that I suggested. So, it's been available, you just have to go get it and do it yourself. You have a responsibility to do that.
Commissioner Dootson?
Thank you. We've just spent three hours doing nothing, and we're trying to figure out, how can we have more robust discussions, more public involvement? Where's the public? Everybody that could leave, did leave. We drove them out a long time ago.
We did.
There's ample opportunity for anyone interested to access the budget information here and now. We've talked about changes that we make. One of the hardest things for every commissioner that comes in to learn is that the public really doesn't care that much about what we do. We're an administrative board, out of sight, out of mind. If we're raising the tax rate, that gets everybody's attention, and, you know, I get it, you'd better, well, be able to justify why you have to do that.
Yeah.
But if you're not raising the tax rate, and even if you're lowering the tax rate, we went two years in a row without increasing by $1 how much we took in in property taxes, and we rolled, this was back when valuations were rising quickly, and we lowered our tax rate in a direct proportion to how much the valuations went up, so that we froze our dollars. Not one person appeared to speak. Nobody said, "Thanks." Nobody said, "Nice job." We're an administrative board. This is what they expect. We quietly do our job. We've gone out to have meetings out in all the districts, we've got to get more public involvement. The public doesn't care. If we're not doing anything out of the ordinary, anything outlandish, the public expects us to quietly do our job. If you're not raising the tax rate, if you have a budget that really doesn't make a lot of waves, it's like pulling teeth to try to get the public to come down here and tell us what they think. I mean, even Doug Kagan has quit coming to our meetings. The public has the opportunity to be as involved as they would like to be, and the truth of the matter is, most of them really just don't care that much. They expect us to quietly do our job and show them a good budget when we get done. Thank you.
Patrick, you?
So, I was asked to clarify the timeframe. So, next week, at the Finance Committee meeting upstairs, after the County Board meeting, Joe, it will not be a vote, but Joe is asking for a consensus of what budgets to publish, because there has to be notice of a public hearing published. That public hearing will take place on July 11th, at the County Board meeting. At that time, the County Board could vote to approve it, or they could lay it over. Years ago, we used to approve the budget in September, the County Board made the decision that, in the County Board's mind, it was more responsible to the taxpayers to approve it either by July 1st, or soon thereafter, July 1st, because the longer you get into the next budget year without actually having a budget, then you're just basically playing with money you kind of don't have. So, that's the timeframe. If anybody has any questions about the timeframe, I'll be happy to answer them.
Commissioner Morgan?
Commissioner Kavanaugh, I could, you know, we're all, and especially myself, we're all kind of interesting people, different, you know, my recommendation, which doesn't mean much, I'm not wanting to ever be chairman of the County Board, but I am going to recommend, and I've done it for six years, and I'm certain that Doug Kagan will tell you, he's never seen a more transparent budget by any subdivision of government. And I started that when I first got here and was lucky enough to be the budget co-chairman with Mark Kraft, and then I've done it with Mike Boyle. I'm going to recommend that next year, I kind of get off the budget deal, and hopefully you'll be the one to do it, and I'll recommend that.
Thank you.
And let you see how maybe that can go. I think they did put that material there last week, as you requested, plus I made sure they sent all the commissioners all the information, and as Mike Boyle said, you know, we put it out there for everyone, and I make sure that, and Joe does it on his own, that it does go out to Doug Kagan and Jeff, so that everyone's seeing everything we do. We did not have any meetings where Mike and I had meetings to do this without, you know, others being involved. There weren't other meetings. I left it to Joe to try to implement that, get input from the commissioners. So, that's where we are, so we'll have that chance next week to be in 903 and do the best we can to try to make certain we hold the line on the budget, and that's our goal, and to try to be fair and listen to the departments that could come here and talk before us. So, that's all I have to say, and we'll work hard to not have a property tax increase, and I, Claire, appreciate your comments, because that's what we try to do, is hold that line.
Commissioner Boyle?
I'd like to see us hold that meeting and have Constance bring her little machine with us, and you can put it on YouTube and Instagram, or wherever it goes, and Skype and everyplace else. I'd like that meeting to be held here, because this is where, there are some people here, where they're just waiting to, you know, use the restroom, I'm not really sure, but anyway, they're here. So, I'd like, I really, I want the meeting here as co-chair, and I hope you'll support me, Commissioner Morgan.
Totally.
Let's have it here, after the County Board, if we have to, we'll have it first, and then if the City Council comes in, we'll leave and finish our county business someplace else. So, let's have the budget hearing here, next Tuesday, first item of business. Is that, is it next Tuesday?
Yeah, I mean, the Finance Committee is on every agenda every week, so next Tuesday, I mean, you could either have it at 903S, as you've scheduled, or you could just choose to have it here during the Finance Committee meeting of the County Board, and then just not hold the Finance Committee meeting.
Well, I'd like it here, and do the same, and disclose the same information, I'd like it here, because then we can be sure everybody stays, and stays in their chair and listens to it, what?
Can you ask me to support it? I totally support it, and if we can do it ahead of time, and you can talk to Mary Ann Borgerson, it's perfect. The other thing we can do, Mike, is we can always do the situation where we recess, and then come back here on Wednesday, or whatever.
Okay, but let's schedule it first, before the County Board meeting, so we get it done with, and then have the County Board meeting, that'd be great. So, I'll leave that up to the people who do those things. Thank you.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Well, thanks, Mike. I think that's a great idea, and PJ, thank you for your kind words about the Finance Committee going forward. The idea that we have this as public as possible, I think, is the, you know, kind of key idea. And as far as the budget document itself goes, I just asked the clerk, is that posted currently, the budget document, on our county website?
Dan H., Douglas County Clerk, which, I mean, we have several reports, which one are you?
Commissioner Boyle referenced a public budget document, and I was just wondering if that's available on our public platform website.
Document that I know of, maybe that was-
You said I should read the budget, and I-
Well, yeah, I've got it right here, it's on the, we were handed it.
Right, right. Is that posted on our website?
It's not my responsibility.
No, I don't have, you know, Mr. Lorenz did email me some documents, but we, and I was actually going to say that I would like to put those up on the website today, but I'd talk to him first, in case there'd been any changes made, anything.
Traditionally, we only publish the proposed budget, we're still at the requested stage, so that's really what I'm trying to get at, at the Finance Committee, is to get agreement of having a proposed budget. So, historically, we've just distributed the requested budget among the commissioners and everybody involved in the budget process, and when we move to that approved budget, that's when it traditionally would get published on a website. It's kind of a, still a work in process.
So, that document, Joe, that I requested of you last week, when did you send that?
I think we were able to get it done at the end of the day on Friday, that's when I put it on your desk. Although, the other document went out Friday afternoon, that had all, that's the one that Mike's been referencing. The one that you have is the detailed one of each individual department, and, you know, so that's a pretty thick document, but the summary documents were distributed to everyone on Friday afternoon also.
So, you know, I guess what I would propose is that maybe we look at posting those. Here's what I've seen in other government entities. They'll have those proposed, well, for instance, in the state, daily, daily, and they may change from day to day, depending on, you know, the recommendations of the Appropriations Committee or other government entities, and there's no harm in that. I mean, it allows people to see the information, if they want to, or not, but I think that the more transparent that we have, you know, to err on that side is probably the way to go, and if we have this document available, and, you know, the clerk has the ability to post this document, I'll certainly forward it to you if you haven't got it by the end of the day, let's have it out there. And that allows us, I think, Mike, to maybe capitalize on some of what we're talking about in terms of the new availability of social media, to have people see things without sitting here and physically coming down, taking time out of their day to the legislative chambers, they can, you know, pick it up on their smartphone if they so desire, but it allows that opportunity, so that we not only do the business, but we appear to do the business in a transparent fashion. So, I'd ask the clerk to entertain, you know, putting that up there, and that way, by next, is it Tuesday, people would have had this amount of time to operate it. If I'd known that that was the document that came out late Friday afternoon, I guess I would have made that proposal at that time, but that being said, we could still give people a week to look at this proposal, and I think that that's a simple and free way to go. It doesn't cost us anything to inform these people of how we're anticipating possibly their money being spent.
Commissioner Boyle?
I was just going to say that, that's fine with me to put this preliminary stuff on, I don't think it'll confuse people, but, and there won't be that many looking at it, from what we can tell. But anyway, I also just found out, much to my surprise and pleasure, is that this broadcast is on YouTube and MyFace, or whatever all those things are, you know, Infomercial, or whatever they are. Anyway, so, these are already, this hearing here today is on Facebook, and all your favorite little dealies that you put on your phone, you know, I can't read them anymore, they're so tiny, but anyway, let's do, go ahead, put the budget on, it's a preliminary thing, and make it clear that it is preliminary, and it's probably going to be the one that's adopted unless we close an office or two. So, I think that's a good idea, I don't have a problem with that at all, so, but I'm really glad to know. Tell us what else is, this is on Cox, and what else?
Well, this is live right now, Dan H., Douglas County Clerk, this is running live right now on Cox, Channel 18, and I'm not sure what the CenturyLink channel is, but then, once it's completed, usually later today, it's posted on the county's YouTube page, and we have links to that on the clerk's website and on douglascounty-ene.gov. So, that's, yeah, the committee hearings all show up there, too.
When you're tired of looking at funny cats on YouTube, you can switch over to the Douglas County Budget. Now, there's a laugh. Okay? Thanks, that's a good idea. I didn't know that.
I'm going to ask that, if we can, I mean, I think everybody hopefully has said what they want to say, so, some of us are speaking for the fifth time on the same issue, so, Commissioner Kavanaugh?
And, thanks, Mike, I think that's great, and I want to commend the clerk and his staff. Ms. Myrendorf does a great job of getting all of these hearings videoed, and minutes of them out to us. You have to have a hearing to have that happen, and so, the idea that we can put these things out in as many media as possible, I think is a good thing, but having the actual hearing to allow Mr. Ash and Ms. Myrendorf to video that and then transcribe it, I mean, I can't imagine how they'd do that in the time that they do, but transcribe it and circulate those minutes to everybody is really a great job of making this transparency of government a reality, so, thank you for doing that. Absolutely.
If I may, I'll throw some kudos to Jeff Backley at dot com, he helps us with the videos, too.
Okay. With that, just add, the Boyle meetings also replay later tonight after the City Council meeting, so, depending on how long that run, it could come on 11:00 PM or midnight. With that, we'll go to Item B, Administrative Services.
We will have in August, to be announced, a briefing on the progress of the Public Safety Bond issue implementation. Construction is underway, and I don't know if we'll have a comment on that from our Corrections Director here in a moment, @DouglasCountyCorrections, and we are well ahead of schedule in terms of the bid process and construction at the West Omaha campus at the Fitzgerald facility. So, by this time in July, we should have that August meeting scheduled, and presentations made there.
Okay. Commissioner Boyle?
Commissioner Kavanaugh, I'd like to ask you to consider having that discussion here, and do it the same way, have it right at the beginning of the meeting, and that way, we get it on Cox Live, and then we get it on YouTube and Your Face, or whatever these other things are called, and so, available to a lot more people. That's a great idea. I'll follow up on that. We would start it at eight o'clock, we actually did this for Commissioner Morgan a couple times, because I believe he was traveling or something, but we start them at eight o'clock, and then, they have to be done by nine, so it's a good way to hold the committee meeting. I think we started at nine, and just have it first before the County Board meeting, because- Excellent idea. People will be here, and we don't have staff coming in early. Absolutely. Okay, good deal.
And we did change the afternoon meetings now, and I'm great with that. Remember, the last couple have been at one.
Exact clock, yeah. So, we'll move them up, that's good. Good deal. Thank you.
Okay. The item, I've asked Brad and those guys to move the DCYC report to next week, because of time, so that will be moved. Also, Commissioner Kraft asked me to announce the meeting for the Community Service Committee, was supposed to be right after the board meeting, he's going to hold that at 1:00. I don't know if that may be delayed, because we have an executive session, so that could be altered, but please be on notice. Let's go to Item A, which is Human Resources, we have the presentation of the Weekly Personnel Report from Civil Service. Anyone have comment on that? Seeing none, are there any legislative issues that need to be discussed? Okay, that takes care of Item Two. I'd like to ask for a recess of the board then, because we do have executive session, so we'll recess, go into the Board of Corrections meeting, and then come back in and go into executive session of the board, so it's their motion for- motion for recess of the county board meeting.
Yeah, second.
There's a motion and a second to recess the county board meeting, all in favor, please vote.
All those opposed, vote too.
Yeah.
There's only four of them, we should have voted two.
Mr. Kavanaugh? You want to vote yes, okay, motion passes.
We'll now call to order the Douglas County Board of Corrections meeting, roll call.
Commissioner Boyle?
Here.
Commissioner Kavanaugh, Commissioner Duda, Mr. Kraft, Commissioner Morgan, Mr. Chair.
Here. Item Two, Citizens' Comments, are there any citizens' comments on the Douglas County Board of Corrections, are there any people that wish to comment on any item that's not officially on the Douglas County Board of Corrections agenda? Seeing none. Item Three, Report from the Director of Corrections, Dr. Foxall.
Commissioner Rogers, if I may, are we gonna take up Item One, the minutes?
Okay, I thought we did, sorry. Item One, Approval of the Minutes of the Board of Corrections Meeting Held Tuesday, May ninth.
For the approval?
There's a motion, there's a second. Is there a second? There's a second, okay. There is a motion, second, please vote.
I can't get it, I'm voting yes.
Commissioner Morgan? Motion passes.
And Dr. Foxall, Item Three.
Good morning Commissioners, you have before you the Board of Corrections Report for May 2017, we are 11 months into the 2016-2017 fiscal year, and we are under our projected budget. In regard to Community Corrections and House Programs, we hosted technical assistance staff from National Entry Resource Center in conjunction with a Second Chance Act grant, which established the intensive outpatient treatment program at Community Corrections, it's a very successful site visit, which provided training to several staff on a variety of criminal, critical topics. Also, a committee reviewed request for RFPs regarding electronic tablet devices and associated services designed for use inside of correctional facilities, vendors will be invited to demonstrate their products at a later date and time, and also tour the facility, so that's moving along as anticipated, the Reentry Specialists have completed over 3,000 assessments thus far, and meetings with other criminal justice stakeholders were held to plan for effective collaboration between Reentry Specialist and outside agencies, so, spoken to you several times about this project, it's moving along very well, and we are looking forward to moving into Phase Two of this initiative. DCDC and State Probation Staff met to discuss the possibility of probation conducting programming inside of our facility, and we're looking forward to that, probation is still gathering data, and a more definite plan will be developed when their research is complete, so in the coming months, I will brief you on that progress with regard to that initiative. 24/7 Alcohol Sobriety Program, initial meetings were held with residing judges in County and District Court to discuss the additional drug testing protocols to the 24/7 program. Further meetings with the judiciary and other criminal justice stakeholders will be held in the coming weeks in preparation for a drug testing pilot, so that is a new initiative, as all we do is alcohol testing on the 24/7 program right now. We had thirty, excuse me, fifty, 34 new admissions in the 24/7 program, 3,160 breath tests were completed, 14 positive, there were nine no-shows, compliance for 24/7 was 99.3 percent, 35 individuals were monitored for a total of 189 SCRAM days, there was one no-show, and overall SCRAM compliance rate was about 99.9 percent, so very, very good with that program. Work release, admitted 35 individuals, those folks contributed 688 hours of community service, house arrest, admitted 77 individuals, Reentry Assistance Program admitted 18 individuals. In-house programs, 56 individuals were admitted last month, and two individuals received their GED. Pretrial services, 65 individuals were referred for priority prosecution, thus saving 1,087 bed days for us, which is important given our population, 300 individuals were placed on pretrial, and 1,130 individuals were managed on pretrial release. Moving to enclosure number four, with regard to personnel, the start date for the new hire class, NHC 17-1, was May 22nd, that's seven individuals in that class, we anticipate a July 10th start date for the second new hire class, and anticipate 15 individuals going into that class, and there will be another class right behind that one as well. Enclosure number five, with regard to our population, we had 1,562 intakes last month, 1,521 releases, yes, and our high count was 1,224, so, we've been running close to 1,280 in the last week, so our numbers are ahead of, again, our numbers are way ahead of where they should be, our ADP, average added population's 1,192, Marshall population's up, ICE population's up, misdemeanor population is up, felony, pretrial population decreased a bit, but is on its way back up, female population was down a bit, but we still have three female housing units open. Medical, 1,289 intake screenings, 395 H&amp;Ps, health and physicals, and 552 discharge referrals. Under the site, for mental health enclosure, 100 initial psych assessments were conducted by staff, 93 initial mental health assessments, and 51 mental health infirmity replacements. And with regard to referrals to community-based mental health services, outpatient psych bed management, 11, mental health and coagulating disorder treatment programs, 216, mental health therapy, five, and long-term psychiatric facilities, referrals, three. And I would refer you to our population history, you can see that easing down just a little bit, but we're starting to tick back up now, as the heat is coming on, and College World Series is next week, so probably gonna see an increase in our numbers. That's par for the course, but our numbers are already high, so, also, call to your attention, take a look at our Corrections Homeless Risk Chart on that back page, and you can see that our numbers are going up, and we will continue to see those numbers rise as well, so, that's what I have for you this month.
All right, Commissioner Boyle?
Excuse me, yes.
For one, I'm sorry, I thought you said more.
That's right, we have a, had a request, I think, from Sarpy County to house improved people, is that correct?
Yes, we did.
Can you tell me us the status of that and what's going on?
We have a couple, we have a couple of requests, and one is with the pretrial program, and we're looking at that, we had a meeting on that about a week or so ago, and we've got some contract language that we're trying to work out, and shift back and forth between the two counties, so we're moving ahead with that.
How will that affect population, or will it?
That will impact Community Corrections, Mike Meyer's shop, and the Reentry Assistance Program, possibly work release, not secure custody.
Okay.
There has been a request for us to house secure custody, but all of our housing units are open right now, we had to open up the last closed one last week, early part of last week, and with construction for the remodel starting in four to six weeks, we're gonna lose a housing unit, so we're gonna be down, so we have to be careful about opening up beds for secure custody inmates, because we're gonna be on the floor in short order.
Okay, I want to ask too about, are we having a meeting with them about mental health, I know they made an inquiry, or is that the subject matter, or is it something else?
That's, that's one of the topics, I think there's several topics to discuss with Sarpy County.
Okay, thanks.
Yes. With more?
Well, one suggestion, I appreciate the work you're doing, the construction's gonna be a real challenge, too, for you, you know, closing down, moving workers in there, and so on, and I think we ought all have a little bit of a update on how that's going, any concerns you have, and we can do it publicly, if that works for you. The other thing I want to suggest to this board is that we don't have, with his great responsibility, and I know all of our people have responsibilities, but we run a very, you run an excellent correction facility, when you see what's going on in some of the other correction facilities, and I know it's a constant challenge, I don't want to see him sitting there for three hours, three and a half hours, before he makes his presentation, and I hope the rest of the commissioners feel the same way as I do, I'd like to take it up, when you bring these briefings as quick as we can, unless you want to sit there and watch this for three and a half hours, so, that's my suggestion, totally, Chris.
I wholeheartedly agree, and I thought it was a judgment call, I thought the finance portion would not take as long as it did, and I thought he would have been there, so I definitely take that under consideration, and want to heed to it.
And then, not, and even put him ahead of what we're doing with the Board of Equalization, as far as I'm concerned, I just feel Mark Foxall's in the corrections is a big priority to me, okay?
Yes.
Thank you.
Commissioner Boyle?
I was gonna say, that, some time ago, I asked the chair, which is now on the agendas, gives the chair the ability to move things around as he or she sees fit, and I do think we should talk about a policy of having, you know, when I see Don Klein sitting in the audience and all this sort of thing, I just go nuts, I think all these people who are working so hard, like, we've kept him now till 12:30, that we need to do exactly what Commissioner Morgan's talking about, and get our directors and elected officials in to make their reports and get them out of here, so, I'd like to see us talk seriously about doing that on a regular basis, thank you.
And note that we have the ability to do it, I just got caught in the judgment call, and the finance, finance matters seem to be a little more demanding than they were. Commissioner Duda?
As soon as somebody explains to me how we're gonna start every meeting with all of our committee meetings right here, because it has to be on YouFace and on YouTube and all, everything, and then, but we don't want to keep anybody waiting, so we're gonna get to you first, it's 12:30, somebody's gotta wait, and if we talk about adding more to these meetings, and then how do we get people out quicker, something's gotta give, something's gotta give, we gotta get realistic with this stuff.
Commissioner Boyle?
I'm one of the big offenders, I think what we need to do is, thank you. Is limit the number of times we talk, although I do get the last word all the time, no, but I think we should limit, maybe to three times per deal, and also time limits, I really think we should, I, you know, that's how I feel, but I think it could, we should try it, see what happens, and limit the number of times we can talk, and the time we talk, except for me.
Any more questions for Director Foxall?
Oh, no, we don't have anything for him. He's still here.
Okay, with that, thank you.
Thank you very much, sorry.
Is there most adjourned?
So move.
Don't we have an executive session?
We have the executive session for county board, you have to go back into the county board.
So adjourn as the Board of Corrections?
Yep, and then we'll come back.
And reconvene as the Board of Commissioners?
Is there most adjourned?
Yes.
So move.
Motion's second.
Please vote.
Jim, do you want to vote?
Yes.
He's voting yes.
Okay, is there, is a motion to come, to reconvene as the county board?
So move, second.
There's a motion to reconvene, please vote.
Just one moment, please. You all made, do me a favor, and tell me again who made the motion, and second, I'd appreciate it.
I made the motion.
I second it.
Okay, all right, we are ready to take the vote to reconvene as the county board commissioners.
There is a need for any...
And I need Commissioner Morgan.
It's on, it was on.
You get, I got you now, motion passes.
There is a need to go into executive session for the purposes of litigation...
East County is absent.
And contract negotiation.
So move. Second.
Please vote.
One moment, please, okay, thank you. Motion passes.
No. Motion passes.